Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome. I will call this Bloomington City Council Business Meeting to order. Tonight is Monday, October 23rd, 2024. Thank you to everyone who is joining us here in the council chambers. Thank you to everyone watching online. We have a special honor once again this evening where the Bloomington Police Department Color Guard will be presenting the colors. I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Chief Bitney and set us up for the presentation of the colors.
Officers present arms.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you Deputy Chief, and thank you to the members of our Honor Guard and all the rest of you. I think that is just so cool when they do that. I mean, and just so appreciative of our police department and the Honor Guard and the fact that they're willing to help us out here at council meetings. So, thank you so very much. And I don't know if they can still hear me out there, but extend our thanks to the Honor Guard for the work that they do. Thank you so very much. And council, as we go through our agenda this evening, you'll understand why the Honor Guard was with us this evening. Our first item of business, of course, is to approve our agenda. And under introductory items, 2.1, we have a swearing in of our Bloomington police officers. And we also have an introduction of department civilian members and recognition of our Bloomington explorers and their competition results, which were very impressive. Item 2.2, then, we have a presentation on the Bloomington Community Brain Health Services Program that is part of our Bloomington Police Department. Very impressive program. I don't know if you saw it, received some good press in the Minnesota Star Tribune within the last couple of days. And so, it's great to see recognition of the outstanding work done within our Bloomington Police Department. Also, under introductory items, we have two proclamations. Item 2.3 is a proclamation for Veterans Day. And item 2.4 is a proclamation for Native American Heritage Month. As we move on, before our consent business, we've got an item under item four, a timed item, which is a resolution awarding the sale of taxable sales tax revenue bonds. And that's basically the revenue bonds for the Ice Garden, the Bloomington Ice Garden. And I think you will hear, we had a very good day in the market today. But because that is a timed item, and for those who are watching who don't know, timed item means we're paying consultants to be here, so we move it up in the agenda, so we get it done, and we can get them off the clock as quickly as we possibly can. So, that's what a timed item is. And so, that will be, that will come in after 2.4. We will then move on to our consent business. Councilmember Carter has consent this evening. And we have 15 items on our consent agenda. We will then double back to item four, our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances, and go to item 4.2, our only public hearing of the evening, this regarding city code amendments, and that in particular being the cannabis business licensing regulations. Number of things under organizational business. Item 5.1 is a study item, our continuing review of the RS1 zoning district review. Item 5.2 is another study item, an update on the self-loop district plan. Item 5.3 is a discussion of our proposed 10-year capital improvement plan. And then, we get into some of our budget discussions. Item 5.4, 2025 budget discussion with our Park and Rec Department. Item 5.5 is that same discussion regarding the police department. And item 5.6, our budget discussion regarding our legal department. And we will wrap up as we do under item 5.7, our city council policy and issue update. Council, as you can see, it's a rather beefy agenda again this evening. So, I would ask council, and I would ask staff, and anybody participating, make sure that our questions are succinct, and our statements are to the point, and we get through this, so we're not here until November. And we can get this done, and make sure we get it done on time. So, that is the agenda. I will, unless there are other additions or corrections, I will move the agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second by Councilmember Loman to accept tonight's agenda as presented. Hearing no further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0, and we have an agenda. And item 2.1 on that agenda is a swearing in of our Bloomington police officers. We will start with that, and then we will move on to the introduction of department civilian members and the recognition of explorers and competition results. Police Chief Booker Hodges, welcome this evening. Thank you for being with us, and thanks for kicking this off for us.
Thank you. I'm going to call an audible here, though. I'm going to do the civilians first, if that's okay. All right, we're going to do the civilians first. So, first, we'll bring up Danielle and Haley. Sorry, you know, I had to call an audible. You'll be all right. So, if you could just tell the mayor and council who you are, where you grew up, and there's a question there for you to answer right there.
Certainly. Mayor, city council, and city manager, thank you so much for having me here today. My name is Danielle Kuja. I just started here in June. I grew up in the West Metro in Chaska. I got my master's in business administration from St. Mary's University. Before starting here, I was the supervisor in the jury office servicing the 4th District, which is Hennepin County. If you got called for jury duty, that was not me, it was all random. But thank you so much for having me here today.
Well, thank you. Thanks for being here, and welcome.
Mayor, city council, city manager, thank you for having me as well. My name is Haley Simpson. I grew up partially in Des Moines, Iowa, and partially in Coon Rapids, Minnesota. I am with dispatch here, and I actually came from a dispatch agency in Colorado, in northeastern Colorado, Weld County. And I'm happy to be here.
And we're happy to have you. Thanks for being with us tonight.
Thank you. So, for those of you don't, Danielle does our JCPB program, so I'm pretty sure she'll be meeting with you all, and she's really hit the ground running. And Haley is doing a great job in our telecommunications center. And I think you're almost done with training, right? Yeah, yeah. So, we'd like to not bring people to the council until they're actually done with their training, because that's just one change I made when I was chief. So, next up will be the police officers. So, first, I'll bring up Ryan, then you can go through this stuff, then I'll bring up Nick, you can go through this stuff, and then we'll do the oath of office. Capisce?
Good evening, Mayor, city council, city manager. My name is Ryan Banazewski. I grew up in Cottage Grove, Minnesota. I have an associate's degree in law enforcement from Inver Hills Community College, and prior to coming to the Bloomington Police Department, I worked five years in the Edina Police Department. Thank you.
And thank you. Always glad to take Edina employees whenever we can.
Mayor, city council, and city manager, thank you for having me here today. My name is Nicholas Hart. I grew up in the great city of Minneapolis. I have an associate's degree in law enforcement from Century College. And prior to working here, I was a correctional officer at Ramsey County Sheriff's Office for five years.
Very good. Welcome.
So, I'm going to take a little bit of chief's privilege here. I've known Nick since, what, I think I was 19 years old? Yeah, so this is the second time I've got to hire him. I hired him in Ramsey County. And, you know, don't cry, man. You know, we don't get emotional here. But in all seriousness, you know, I got seven years left to work, so there's not going to be an opportunity for me to swear in either. Either of my two sons are, you know, because they're all, they're still young, and if I'm still working, by then, something really bad has happened. But so, Nick is going to be the closest thing, you know, to me as a younger brother, so I'm really happy for him to be here, and I know he's going to do a great job for the city of Bloomington long after I'm gone. So, keep this recorded, Nick, so just in case you screw up, we've got this lined up. All right, so we're going to take the oath of office now, so if both of you want to step here and raise your right hand.
I'm just going to interrupt for just a moment here. If they're friends or family here, it's going to happen once, so get in a good position to take a picture. And don't be shy. We're not at all, we don't stand on ceremony here. So, if you get close, get, come on up, don't, you don't have to. Nope, come on up. There you go.
Oh, yeah, don't worry about me.
Yeah, don't worry about him.
I'm just the noise reader over here today. All right, is everybody up here who wants to get up here to take a picture? All right, so I'm going to say, you say aye, and then state your name, but actually say your name, not say state your name, if that makes sense? Aye. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. And of the state of Minnesota. And faithfully discharge the duties. As a police officer. For the city of Bloomington. Minnesota. To the best of my judgment. And ability. Congratulations.
Congratulations, welcome.
All right, so for the family and friends, there's a reception upstairs, so I'll let Nick and Ryan take y'all up there to that.
And if I could just say, chief, very quick, to our new officers, but also to Haley and to Danielle, welcome. Congratulations, welcome aboard. We didn't give you a good round of applause, we should give a round of applause as well. To you and to our officers, and I say this to all of our new employees here in the city of Bloomington, this group will come and go, they may or may not recognize us when we're out at Cubber, out on the street. They know you, and they see you, and they work with you every day. You're the face of Bloomington, basically, in so many different ways. And with that comes a lot of responsibility, but it also comes, it's a great privilege. And appreciate your being here, and you're willing to take that responsibility on, and look forward to you representing Bloomington and serving our residents in the best way that you can, for as long as you possibly can. So, welcome aboard, glad to have you.
All right, so the next thing I'm going to go to is our explorers, and I understand we have a presentation for that. I'm going to be very brief, y'all, because I know y'all got, I don't want to stand between y'all and coffee and cake over here. All right, so I'm going to bring up Officer Anderson here, who's one of our explorer advisors, and three of our explorers. So, our explorer program had a really good competition here over the last month at the Explorer Conference, and we want to go to the next slide. So, that for those of you who don't know what the Explorer Program is, for kids, I say kids because I'm old, but 14 to 20 years of old, years of old who have an interest in law enforcement, this started back here in 1972, and they get an opportunity here to do a lot of hands-on and community service projects. This is a really good program. You want to go to the next slide. At the last association competition, you can see here, they did very well. They placed first in traffic stops, second in search and arrests, and street decisions, second in an unknown trouble, whatever that one is. I don't know, you guys might have to explain that to me. And third in first aid, which is, you know, they've done a really good job, and our Explorer Post this year has grown. I think we're at 22 some members. And Parks Director Anne, her son is also one of our explorers, and yeah, she was up there taking pictures of him, embarrassing him, so. So, Officer Anderson, you want to say a couple of words about the Explorer Program? He was a former explorer, too.
Good evening, Officer Anderson, welcome.
Mayor, city council, city manager, thanks for the opportunity to be here. As chief said, you know, I was a former explorer, grew up in Bloomington, did explorers for about four years. Now, the lead advisor, first year doing that. I've been an advisor for the last, this will be my fourth year as well, so I've had the opportunity to watch these guys grow. It's really awesome for the opportunity to come here and be recognized by you guys. I don't think we've ever had that before, so I appreciate it. Unknown trouble is basically just going into like a 911 hangup, you know? They send you to an address, and it could be, you know, someone accidentally dialed 911, or it could be, you know, some kind of assault. Did any of you guys actually do that scenario?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, it was like a property damage, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And you guys got dispatched basically to an address, and when they got there, they found out there was a property damage that was taking place. And so, I think they scored close to perfect in that scenario, so. For those that don't know what the Explorer Program, I know it was up there quick, but I'll just say, it's eight of us police officers, we meet every Thursday, and we teach the youth basically a bunch of different scenarios and the skills that we learn. And we teach that to them, and then we go to Duluth for this conference, and then we also go down to Rochester at the end of April for the big state conference. We compete against different police departments.
Very cool. Well, congratulations on doing such a fine job in the competition. I know that it gets a bit stressful, I know, and especially if you're competing in something that you've been trained to do that isn't necessarily a competition, but you put those skills to use, and appreciate the work that you've done for all that. Thank you, officer, for leading them through, and chief, for supporting this. And I know the Explorer Program is bursting at the seams now, as it hasn't in the past, so appreciate the leadership that you've shown with that. So, thank you all, congratulations to you for the work that you've done.
Thank you.
And Jamie just reminded me, we can't let you get away without introducing yourselves. I'm sorry, we forgot about that.
That's where I was going to call them back up here to do that.
Forgot about that.
I don't know if you want to read all that stuff on there, or you could just say where you go to school and who you are.
Hi, I'm Kaia Fiatto. I am a first-year college student at University of Wisconsin-Éclaire now. This is my, going to be my second year in explorers. It's just been a really nice, great opportunity to learn from the officers in Bloomington, and it's just, it's an honor to be here today, so thank you very much.
Thank you, welcome.
Hello, my name is Caesar Eugene Garcia. I grew up here in Bloomington for most of my life. I'm going for a degree in law enforcement over at Hennepin Technical College, hoping that my experience here in Bloomington Explorers is going to help me get a position here in Bloomington eventually. And yeah, I'm just happy to be here with you guys today, and thank you for this opportunity, especially Chief Hodge.
Thank you, thanks for being here.
I'm Nicholas Kashi Kurtz. I am currently a junior at Mankato University. My major is law enforcement, so I hope to be a police officer for the city of Bloomington in the future. I'm currently captain of the post, and I love all of our advisors and the people in it. It's, I mean, I have such a good time with every, everyone, so thank you, guys.
Thank you. The bars look good on you, well done, so congratulations. And one final thing, while we're talking police accolades, I know there was a Make-A-Wish event over at the Mall of America, and I don't know the specific details, but I know that Bloomington Police was very involved with it over the past weekend. And so, thank you to whoever, if anyone here participated, raise your hand, and thank you so very much. If not, pass the thanks on to the members of the department that did, because that's a great, it's a great way to be part of the community, and we appreciate that. So, thank you all very much for that as well.
Thanks. All right, so this is the last one you got me for here today. We're going to talk about our Bloomington Community Brain Health Services Program. So, we're going to put this up. This is a great program. I can't say enough about this, and when we started this a year ago, if you had have told me we'd be where we're at today, I wouldn't have believed it. So, this has been a great addition here. So, we're going to go to the next slide, please. So, this is just a picture from the press conference when we started this a year ago. And the program is set up to where we can give people who are in crisis immediate in-home therapy, because one of the gaps that we had seen, we have embedded social workers here at the police department, but our social workers were habitually telling us that people needed therapy. And to get therapy was eight to 10 weeks out, and that's for people who had insurance. So, if we could fill that gap and get them immediate in-home therapy or therapy here at the police department or some other location, even telehealth, we felt that we could make a difference. Next slide, please. So, the goals of the program were obviously to decrease time individuals in crisis must wait to receive services, and also decrease our officer response to nonviolent health calls, and to eliminate the cost barrier for in-home therapy. One of the things that we wanted to make sure that we provided this service to everyone for free, the initial eight to 10 weeks, because bottom line, the less we have to go out to see someone, and the steps we can take to get people help is something that we really need to do. To this date, we are the only police department that I can find in the country that's ever tried to do this. Most police departments are doing the co-responder model, where you send a police officer out with a social worker, and that has shown some success in terms of reducing calls to patrol, but it has not, to my knowledge, shown the success that I'm going to show you that we're seeing in our program. So, the next slide, please. This is Janet and Lucas, and they are two contracted therapists. Lucas is actually here on a full-time basis, and Janet is here on a part-time basis. Next slide, please. This is everybody that's working in the program now, so we have our contracted therapists, and then we have our interns. Our interns are here getting their clinical hours so they can get their degree. Next slide. So, what have we seen since January? Again, we're kind of flying this plane, building this plane as we're flying it. Thirty-nine referrals have been made for mental health treatment, of those 17 clients have chosen to proceed with therapy. Over 130 sessions have been completed by 17 clients. The age range is from eight to 90 years old. All the clients reside in Bloomington, and the therapy we've been giving to people is at their home, their office, and a couple are using telehealth. Next slide, please. We've been operating with minimal budget. We started this, we used some opioid settlement funds, obviously, because we're dealing with people who have addiction issues, and some of the public safety money to start this up. Right now, you can see, we currently have one full-time therapist, one part-time therapist, three interns, and then later on in the budget presentation, there's going to be an ask to continue the funding for this program, just based on what we've seen, and I think it's been really effective. Next slide, please. All right, so the goals are to reduce the annual mental health calls, evaluate referral process sources to reduce barriers and increase efficiency, and obviously, our partnership with public health. I can't speak enough about how that's really benefited us and the police department, and partnering with public health. I mean, it's one of these things in the city that we like to do. And I know we're crushed on time, but next slide, please. We've received a few nominations for awards for this program already, and we've just gotten started. I think moving forward, this will be the model for agencies. And what I meant when I said earlier about the co-responder model is, even though patrol cops might not be getting those calls, there's, the co-responders are still getting the calls. What we've seen is when we've gotten people that have therapy, they're not calling, period. So, it's not just sending out the co-responders day in and day out. The people who are not, they're not calling 911, period, because they're getting the services that they need. And I'll end on this, this program is not a cure-all, because obviously, you know, people have to be willing to accept treatment, but those who are and participate in the program, we've been fortunate enough to see some positive results. I didn't think we were going to see this many people in such a short period of time. So, I'll take any questions you may have with that.
Thank you, chief. Council questions? Councilmember Nelson, and Councilmember Alessandro. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, chief. This program is amazing, and appreciate your leadership on it. For those in the community, can you explain what types of therapy is available? Is it, you know, across-the-board, depression, bipolar, schizophrenia, substance abuse, other things? Can you give us sort of some parameters on what people might come to this program for?
So, right now, they can handle almost anything, right? So, if someone's suffering from depression, chemical dependency issues, they've been dealing with families also, who may have other issues that require family therapy. Are they able to do group therapy, which is one of the things that we're going to start doing with some people who suffer from opioid addiction? So, they are fully serviced therapists, they're able to provide a gamut of service. They're not able to issue psychotropic medications, per se, but they're able to provide that therapy service.
And then, one quick follow-up. How does this work with the embedded social workers that we have? Would the embedded social workers refer people to this, if it makes sense? Or how does, how does that, does that relationship work in addition to the police officers?
Yeah, so the embedded social workers do, is one of the avenues that our therapists do get referrals to. I call our embedded social workers, they're like general contractors, right? Their job is to find people the services they need, as opposed to actually providing those services. And we do get referrals through our social workers for the services of the therapists, and we also get referrals from Bloomington Public Schools. They also refer students and families to the program, too. Now that it's starting to get out there, we're starting to see a pickup in referrals.
Councilmember Alessandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, chief, for being a part of this. This is really, really important, and I agree with you, it would be great if every single city and county took this on, because I think it would solve a lot of the challenges. I'm curious about the therapists themselves, and I guess, how many individuals can they support, you know, per therapist? And if we have to talk about this later when we get to budget discussions, that's fine. And then, how many sessions do the folks get in the program with a therapist?
Yep. So, they can each support about 15 at a time, and right now, we're working on with eight to 10 sessions. So, what we're starting to do now is one of the gaps that we identified with the healthcare providers, is once we start doing intakes, we're going to start reaching out to the healthcare providers right away to be able to get that soft handoff at eight to 10 weeks. Because right now, if you needed services today, and you went to Park Nicklet or Health Partners or Alina, it's going to take you eight to 10 weeks to get service. So, when we get the people in the door, now we're going to start to make that connection to make this off handoff.
Right, okay. So, just a clarification, so your goal is to provide services immediately and bridge the gap between that and the longer care program they have with those providers?
Yes.
Great.
Yeah, this is not a long-term, this is, that's why I call it crisis, yeah.
Understood, thank you, appreciate it.
Additional questions, council? Very good. Congratulations on the success of the first year of this program. I know when you rolled it out, we were all excited to see how it was going to work, and as you said, you've kind of been building the plane as you're flying it, and clearly it's been working, so.
We ain't crashed yet, Matt, so that's all.
Good work, good work. So, well done, and continue this. This is, this is important work, and I think you're doing a very good job with it, so thank you so very much for the.
Thanks.
Thanks. Council, next on our agenda are two proclamations, but before we get there, I'm going to pull out a bit of mayoral prerogative here, and. out a, a bit of mayorial prerogative here and, and the city attorney's gonna lose her mind because I'm going off agenda script here. But, uh, I, I did want to take an opportunity while we've got everybody and a lot of folks watching. Uh, we received some very sad news last week that former mayor Coral Hool passed away. And Coral served as mayor of Bloomington in the mid to late nineties. And in addition to her just remarkable leadership within the city of Bloomington, uh, she had a remarkable string of leadership as a, as a woman mayor in the, in the state of Minnesota. And she's recognized, uh, as, as just a, uh, thoughtful, caring leader who got a lot of stuff done. And she did a lot of very good work within the city of Bloomington and she will be deeply missed. And want to extend our condolences as a city to both, uh, to John and, and the entire Hool family. And I, our, we asked our communication staff to, to pull something together as quickly as they could, and they did over the weekend. And so, we'd like to play that now just as a bit of a tribute to, to Coral.
This was a scene in January nineteen ninety-five when councilmember Hool became Mayor Hool.
I, Coral Hool, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Minnesota and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the mayor of the city of Bloomington. I had spent those years of serving the community and the city on those advisory boards and commissions. I knew the city well. I knew it was my time to serve as mayor, and I felt ready and prepared.
Hool was a very visible official. You often saw her at the city's annual River Rondell event, various community award ceremonies, grand openings, and visiting with citizens from foreign lands. Hool says she relinquished her full-time job in order to completely devote her time to being a good public servant.
Good morning and welcome to the mayor's march for mammograms. You think what I learned in serving as mayor on the council, it's very rare that you have a beginning and an ending in city government and in city life.
So, I would like to introduce Mayor Coral Hool, the first and only woman to serve as mayor of the city of Bloomington.
So, I represented public health and trying to limit access to tobacco to youth. Everyone says this, but it truly comes from the depth for me, is that it really has been an honor and a privilege to serve in Bloomington. It is an experience that comes to few people to serve as mayor, and it really holds a very, very special place in my life. And I just feel very honored to have been able to do it.
Uh, we will miss Coral, certainly. Uh, even after she retired and, and kind of slipped into the, stepped into the, the background a bit, she, I know she still had a lot of influence. She was a great friend, I know, to me and to other members of the council and always was there to offer some sage advice. So, uh, again, our, our sympathies to John and the rest of the family. And I know that, uh, official details, uh, about a memorial service are coming out. I believe it's in mid-November, uh, at some point, but, uh, be on the lookout for unofficial obituaries. So, but Coral was a powerhouse. She was something else. So, she's going to be missed. Thanks to our communication staff for pulling that together on short notice. That's very nice. Very nice. We have, uh, two proclamations and I'm gonna head down to the podium. As I mentioned, we have two proclamations this evening, and we're gonna start with one regarding Veterans Day, November eleventh, twenty twenty-four. And I'd like to call up Deborah Vangle. Deborah is a Bloomington resident, a twenty-year Navy veteran. So, thank you so very much for your service. If you can come on right around here with me, and I'm gonna read the proclamation and then turn the, uh, the microphone over to Deborah. Proclamation for Veterans Day, November eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Whereas the courage, dedication, and sacrifice of the men and women who have served in our armed forces have safeguarded the freedoms and principles upon which our nation stands. And whereas our veterans have not only answered the call to serve, but have also shown extraordinary resilience, leadership, and commitment to the well-being of our nation. And whereas it is our collective responsibility to express our gratitude and provide unwavering support to those who have served, ensuring they receive the recognition, care, and assistance they deserve. And whereas the service of our veterans continues to inspire and strengthen our community, reminding us of the importance of unity, compassion, and respect. And whereas on behalf of the city of Bloomington, we extend a heartfelt thank you to the American Legion Post fifty, 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 five, five fifty, uh, for their unwavering support of our veterans' appreciation celebration. For several years now, their financial contributions have made a significant impact, and this year's generous four thousand dollar donation has once again ensured that we can continue to honor our veterans in a meaningful and memorable way. Their dedication to our veterans and the community is deeply appreciated, and we are grateful for their ongoing partnership. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim November eleventh, twenty twenty-four as Veterans Day in the city of Bloomington. And to honor our service members, the city will display the Veterans Photo Wall at Civic Plaza from October twenty-ninth through November fifteenth, which can also be viewed virtually at BLM dot MN forward slash veterans. The city will host a veterans' appreciation celebration on Friday, November eighth, at the Minnesota Masonic Heritage Center. And additionally, the prisoner of war, missing in action, POW, MIA flag, will be flown at Civic Plaza and Bloomington Public Works from November eighth to the fifteenth in tribute to those who remain unaccounted for. I encourage all Bloomington residents to honor and remember our veterans by viewing the photo wall, reflecting on their sacrifices, and expressing our profound gratitude for their service. Signed this twentieth day of October twenty twenty-four. Uh, Veterans Day, obviously, an annual, uh, remembrance day in, in the United States and certainly here in, uh, the city of Bloomington, but every year it just takes on, uh, I think a greater and greater meaning, considering the number of folks we, uh, continue to no longer have with us from World War One, obviously, and but World War Two, and now as we head into, uh, Korean veterans and Vietnam veterans, and now the most recent veterans who have served in conflicts across the, uh, the globe and who have done so much for us. And it really does take on, uh, quite the, quite the significance. And Deborah, I appreciate your being here with us this evening. Appreciate the, the red, white, and blue colors that you're wearing. And, uh, I'm gonna turn the microphone over to you and, and let you say a few words.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and all those have gathered here today. I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to the city of Bloomington for this incredible honor. When Ms. Crombie reached out to me expressing her desire to include a female veteran in this proclamation, I was truly taken aback. It is with deep pride that I stand before you, accepting this recognition on behalf of all the brave women and men who have served this country. At the age of eighteen, I found myself like many, unsure of what my future would hold. I was living with my aunt and uncle and my three cousins at the time, and I knew, knew I needed a new direction. With the full support of my family, I made a decision to enlist in the United States Navy. Looking back, it was one of the most significant decisions of my life. I began my Navy journey at boot camp in Orlando, Florida. After graduating, I was assigned to a task squadron VA forty-two at NES Oceana in Virginia Beach, where I worked on the A-six intruder aircraft. At that time, I hadn't chosen a specific job, but I eventually found myself as a plane captain. It was an exciting but daunting responsibility, ensuring our aircraft were fully prepared for flight. From there, I decided to become an aviation electrician's mate, which came with even greater responsibilities. I had the privilege of serving aboard the USS John F. Kennedy and the USS Theodore Roosevelt during a period when integrating women into these roles was an evolving process. My next chapter brought me to Patrol Squadron VP forty-nine at NES Jacksonville, Florida, where I worked on the P-three Orion. When I first saw this massive aircraft, which was a hundred and sixty feet, a hundred and sixteen feet long, thirty-three feet tall, with a wingspan of almost a hundred feet, I remember thinking, what have I got myself into? But as I've learned time and again, no challenge is too great. When you are willing to learn and grow, over time, I grew to love the work and took pride in supporting the anti-submarine warfare and maritime surveillance missions that took us on deployments, uh, to places like Iceland, Spain, Sicily, and Puerto Rico. I know they're difficult places, but it was great. Um, as a Navy, as the Navy continued to evolve, so did I. When my squadron decommissioned, I transferred to VP thirty, the P-three Training Squadron, where I took on the role of shift supervisor, a position still largely held by men at the time. I was responsible for assigning daily workload to sailors and ensuring every task was completed with the highest standard. I was, excuse me, it was an opportunity to show that women could lead just as well as our male counterparts, and I embraced that challenge. For my final tour, I chose to join VQ-two in Rhoda, Spain, where I once again found myself in a supervisory role, leading around twenty sailors in the electrical shop. It was a fulfilling way to cap off my twenty years of service, continuing to mentor and lead the next generation of sailors. I take immense pride in my decision to enlist in the Navy and the work I accomplished over those two decades. It wasn't always easy, but the journey was worth every challenge. Today, I stand here not only as a Navy veteran, but as a testament to the power and perseverance purpose and service. Thank you again for this incredible honor. I accept this proclamation on behalf of all veterans, those who came before me, those who serve today, and those who will serve in the future. Let us always remember their sacrifices, and may we continue to honor the legacy of service that binds us together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, we're gonna get an official picture here. I'm gonna present you with it. Make sure this is the right one. It is. So...
Thank you.
Thank you, Joni.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, come on. We gotta step over here. Don't be shy. Don't be shy.
Come on. Hurry up.
Hurry up. They wanna go home.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Our second proclamation tonight is for Native American Heritage Month, which is November twenty twenty-four, which we're just a couple of days away from despite the eighty-degree weather. And I would like to call up, uh, Carol McDonald, our Human Rights Commissioner, to stand with me here, and she's gonna have some comments as I finish up here. Good evening and welcome. Thanks for being here tonight.
Welcome. Kind of a tough act to follow.
Yeah. I've confidence in you. Proclamation for Native American Heritage Month, November twenty twenty-four. Whereas during Native American Heritage Month, we celebrate the rich tapestry of indigenous peoples and honor their vibrant and diverse cultures, which we recognize as inextricably woven into the history and present times of this country. And whereas the indigenous people who have resided on this land prior to the arrival of the European settlers experienced injustices attempting to suppress and eradicate the knowledge, practice, and observances of their own cultural and spiritual heritage. And whereas the city of Bloomington is built on lands once known by Native Americans as where the water touches the bluffs and where sacred burial mounds of the ones who came before us remain. And whereas Native Americans have a long and rich history and presence in Bloomington, including Dakota, Ojibwe, and Iowa, and we recognize the eleven tribal nations that call Minnesota home. And whereas indigenous people have and continue to make essential contributions to law and justice, arts, environmental stewardship, government, and many other endeavors. And whereas the Bloomington City Council resolves to support their legacy and preserve their sacred heritage for generations to come. And whereas the Bloomington City Council includes equity and inclusion as one of its strategic priorities and strives to make continued and meaningful progress towards equity and inclusion for Native Americans. And whereas the Bloomington City Council recommits to supporting Native Americans and working side by side with their leaders to secure stronger and safer communities. And whereas during the month of November, we commemorate the rich and diverse culture of Native American people and recognize their continued contributions in strengthening the diversity of our society. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim November as Native American Heritage Month, signed this twentieth day of October twenty twenty-four. So, Carol, thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for being here to, uh, represent the Human Rights Commission and to accept this proclamation. I'm gonna turn the microphone over to you.
Okay. Mayor, City Council, and all those in attendance. Han metaku yape. Ampeta waste de tanyan. Wan chia kapé. Carol McDonald. Ima ki yapeye. Damakota. Owate. Mitawan kin ihenktowan. Awicha ki yape. Ki de Native American Heritage Month yapeye. Ki naun wo you onidhan. Ki de elchi wichasa, excuse me, wichasta. Owate. Owas. Awicha wasichu pitama yaye. In translation, good day. It's good to see you all. My name is Carol McDonald. I am Dakota. I am ihenktowan. I accept the Native American Heritage Month, uh, proclamation on behalf of all native peoples. Thank you. Thank you all.
And I want to say also thank you for your service in the Human Rights Commission. That's great that you died. So, we're gonna do the grip and grin now. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you both for being here this evening, and thanks for recognizing, uh, and being part of our, our proclamation, and, and thanks for your, your words here in front of the city council. So, thanks so much. Next on our agenda, council, uh, as we described when we were talking about the agenda, we're moving up item four point one. It's a timed item. So, we are gonna go to item four point one. This is a resolution awarding the sale of taxable sales tax revenue bond, series twenty twenty-four B. Laura Economy Sholder is here to lead us through this. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Uh, with us this evening is Julie Eddington online and, um, Elizabeth Bergman, our, um, from Baker Tilly, our municipal advisor. Uh, they have worked a lot of hours to work through all the sales tax pieces, and this is our first sales tax bond. So, they're here with us. So, Bloomington, um, we have for our general obligation bonds, the three triple A's, and we've held that, um, honor for the last twenty years. We are one of thirty-seven municipal governments that have the triple triple A. Um, and again, that's for general obligation bonds. Back in August, we had a presentation with Baker Tilly, and they did go through when we have a revenue bond, um, it would, um, when they look at our information, it's not gonna be at the same level as general aggregation because we're not pledging property taxes for this. We're pledging the revenue bonds. So, with standard and course, they rated us a double A, and they gave us a very nice, stable outlook. And they looked at the healthy part of the management, the government, the metro area, and our robust information. Um, and so far, um, we've had four months of sales tax revenue, and each month has progressively gotten better. But I think we're gonna see some cycles of month-to-month activities, probably once Christmas hits. We might have a lull until summer months, but we'll see. The project before us is, uh, for the Bloomington Ice Garden. We went into, um, this morning's bond sale, um, with, uh, preliminary official documents for thirty-eight, or thirty-four million eight hundred and sixty-five thousand with the six bids, the low bid being Baird, Robert Baird. We had six bidders. Um, Elizabeth looked at the other items that were in the market today, and with those six bidders, we, um, generally got more bidders than most other ones. A lot of the other ones were getting two and three. So, um, people like Bloomington, our interest cost was a five point oh nine. And so, with that, um, towards the end of the week, it looked like the interest rates had been ticking up higher, and we would probably be at the same rate that we thought back in September at about five and a half. So, we came in about forty basis points less than where we thought it would be. So, a good day in the market. Um, in the twenty-year timeframe, we have a mix of premiums and discounts, initial premiums and discounts, um, premiums in the first ten years and discounts in the latter ten years. So, that helped reduce amount of debt service reserve by about a hundred thousand each year. And then we're also using the first three months of the sales tax as part of this so that we can fund the debt service reserve, um, fund thirty-five million for the project, and we were able to actually totally reduce the bonds by about another hundred thousand. So, timing, we're selling the bonds today, and we'll receive the proceeds on the twenty-sixth of November. And before you is the motion. Elizabeth's here for questions, and I'm here for questions if you have anything about the market.
Thank you so much. Council questions on this? Very good. Like you said, it's a, it was a good day in the bond, in, in the bond market for us. So...
Yes, it was.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to the council. Congratulations to the council, too, because it's all of us that bring this really forward.
Council, Councilmember Delisandro.
I would assume you're looking for a motion.
I am, and I do want to point out, the number I think that we originally started with was $34,865, and if you'll notice on the motion sheet, is $34,780, reflecting that. So, just wanted to be sure.
Right.
Because I think it was different in some of the documents that went out.
Very good. Yeah, but I'd happy to make motion. If I make a quick comment beforehand, nothing makes you more chuffed to be a part of a community than when you see, like, all levers being, all cylinders being fired, right? So, we have this great engagement earlier this week with the Parks and Recs team, and we get a lot of kudos tonight about how well that went. I was at a thing over to, earlier over at Oak Point, and I heard wonderful things about our traffic folks who are talking to people. Now, we're sitting here, and, you know, double A is the best you can do when it comes to sales tax bonds. We get that, and we knock that out of the park. And that was just after our communications team ran the table, and our explorers team ran the table, and the VPD is introducing a pilot for brain health. And I don't know, I just am feeling pretty good about being a part of this fun team. And so, just wanted to make note of that. And I know, Lori, you're one of the leaders on the team, so thank you for all that you do, because it's obvious that from an outside looking in, people, people think we're really darn good. In fact, I was doing a door knock yesterday, won't say why or anything, that's not important. Somebody said that they were using our Bloomington Housing Ordinance as the basis for their policies as well. So, even in that area, we're leading the charge. So, just wanted to make that comment. And with that, I will make a motion to adopt this resolution awarding the sale of taxable sales tax revenue bonds, Series 2024B, in the original aggregate principal amount of $34,780,000, fixing their form and specifications, directing their execution and delivery, and providing for their payment.
Second.
Pause.
Hold on.
Sorry, $34,780,000. I knew I, I heard thousand twice, and I'm like, how did I say that? Pardon me.
Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, second by Councilmember Lohman, for the resolution awarding the sale of taxable sales tax revenue bonds, Series 2024B, in the aggregate principal amount of $34,780,000. Counsel, any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to our, the work of our bond council and the work that gets done on behalf of the city of Bloomington. It's appreciated. Thank you much. Back on track, Council, we'll move to item three, our consent agenda. Councilmember Carter has our consent business tonight. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I will hold 3.1, the resolution to accept donations, and I have not heard of other holds. Does anybody have it? 3.2? All right, 3.2 by Councilmember Rivas. Anybody else? plane usually throws me off, so. All right. So, with that, I would move to approve items 3.3 through 3.15.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember Lohman to accept tonight's consent agenda as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Item 3.2, Councilmember Rivas. Questions on that?
Yes.
Please.
I just, just for the public knowledge, I had a lot of questions that I couldn't explain myself, so the, what is the reason why we are trying to, I'll roll the notes, to cancel the special assessments to city property?
Mr. Verugui.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Rivas, this is an annual housekeeping, and we do this every year for projects where there is an assessment of city property. So, our CFO is here to explain a little bit more.
Ms. Economy Scholder.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Rivas, as the city manager explained, this is standard with a normal payment management. When we have city assessments, we cancel them officially because they're not going to go to the county, but internally, we move money out of one capital project fund into another to pay for them. So, the city still pays the same special assessments at the same rate everybody else does.
I have a follow-up question on that.
Councilmember?
Okay. It is, according to the packet that we got, it says that the funds to pay for that come from the debt service funds. So, the question is, how are those, that debt service fund funded? Where does the money come from?
Mayor, Councilmember Rivas, back in the '90s, accumulation of interest in other debt things that were happening back then before specific IRS and SEC rules, we were able to accumulate funds in this account, and it can only be used for very specific things like this or other debt activities. It can't be used for, it can't be moved out of there to utilize for other city functions.
So, the sole purpose of that fund is to pay for the city debt, right?
This type of piece. As we move forward with other debt issues, those are programmed specifically for that bond issue and that debt.
Right. Thank you.
Any additional questions, Councilmember?
No.
Are you comfortable then moving item 3.2 on tonight's agenda?
Yes. So, I just, yes.
If you could, please.
I motion to approve the cancellation of special assessments levied on the city-owned properties listed below in the amount of $135,000, 147.28.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Rivas, second by Councilmember Muah, to approve the cancellation of the special assessments as stated in item 3.2. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And doubling back to item 3.1, the resolution to accept donations, Councilmember Carter.
Yes. So, before I make the motion, I just want to send some thanks out to some organizations and individuals in the community. So, we received several donations to the police department, and I want to call out a pretty significant one from the Bloomington Obedience Training Club. So, we received an $1,800 donation for the K-9 unit, and then received several others. We also received a donation for the Bloomington Center for the Arts in memory of Darla K. Mahila, Majila, I might be mispronouncing her name. And so, I want to thank Martha Cooley for that and David Ecklard. And then, last but not least, want to thank the American Legion Post 550 for their donation to help support the Veterans Appreciation Event. So, with that, I would like to ask staff to write the appropriate thank yous, and I would make a motion to adopt a resolution to accept the donations as listed.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember Muah to accept donations as listed. Discussion, Council, Mr. Verugui.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Carter, appreciate you sharing this and acknowledging some folks. I do want to also acknowledge a couple of folks who aren't individuals but are groups, the Bloomington Police Officers Federation in the city of Bloomington, along with the Bloomington Police Supervisors Association, each donated $500 for the community services unit and the work that they do around the holiday season. It's, it's a really nice thing to see that every year, our police department staff are putting their own resources in to support the community, really appreciate them doing it, and want to make sure that they get recognized for it.
Thank you, Mr. Verugui. Any additional comments? We have a motion and a second on item 3.1. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Councilmember Carter, for taking care of tonight's consent business. Moving on to item five, our organizational business for this evening. Item 5.1 is a study item. How did I miss 4.2? Because we already did 4.1, so I was skipping right over Mr. Brillard here. Item 4.2, this is our public hearing of the evening regarding the city code amendments for the cannabis business licensing regulations. Mr. Brillard, good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good to be back before you again, bringing the cannabis business ordinance across the finish line with you tonight. I'm sure my clicker's working. There we go. All right. So, a little bit of recap, I don't have much for you in terms of a presentation tonight. We'll just go over some background and highlights of the ordinance, hold a public hearing, and then get into questions. So, in 2023, the Minnesota Legislature passed a law legalizing cannabis sales, possession, and use, and sets up a regulatory framework for the cannabis industry. Portions of the law are now, portions of the law are in effect now, and others will become effective as the Office of Cannabis Management completes its rulemaking process and begins issuing licenses to cannabis businesses in 2025. State statute grants local governments the right to adopt reasonable restrictions on the time, place, and manner of the operation of cannabis businesses. Cities cannot prohibit the establishment or operation of a cannabis business, but can implement local controls, including zoning districts and performance standards, hours of operation, buffer requirements, and limiting the number of retail licenses. So, during study items held earlier this spring and summer, the Advisory Board of Health, Planning Commission, and City Council provided direction on all of those issues I just mentioned. Based on that policy direction, city staff prepared two city code amendments, one covering the zoning code aspects, which was approved by the City Council about a month ago on September 30th, and then the ordinance before you tonight covering the licensing and registration standards for cannabis retail businesses. The ordinance for consideration at this public hearing includes amendments to City Code Chapters 13, which covers alcoholic beverage control, and Chapter 14, business licenses and permits. Textually, this amendment repeals two existing code sections regarding medical marijuana facilities, which was adopted back in 2015, and the hemp products or lower potency hemp edible products, which was adopted back in 2022. It replaces both of those sections with a new section aligned with current Minnesota statutes regarding adult-use cannabis, medical cannabis, and lower potency hemp products. The ordinance does include a minor change under the alcoholic beverage control piece, just in case you're wondering about that. That was to amend the definition of exclusive liquor stores, to bring that in line with current state statute, and to allow liquor stores to sell the lower potency hemp products. In the existing ordinance covering the hemp products, there was actually a prohibition on liquor stores selling those products. And the piece of, the piece of the ordinance in Chapter 13 that we are looking at amending tonight had a very specific definition of what a liquor store can sell, kind of spelling out a list of the products that they can sell. Instead of doing that in our ordinance, we're just going to refer to state statute, which does get amended from time to time. So, I'll, I'll highlight some of the topics covered by the ordinance. So, the ordinance requires retailers to register with the city clerk's office. It sets registration fees, authorizes staff to inspect and conduct compliance checks, establishes penalties in violation, or penalties and fines for violation of both the ordinance and of state statute, prohibits self-service, self-service or automated sales, and the sampling of products. There is, in, in the draft ordinance, there's no limitation on the number of retail licenses based on the direction provided by the Advisory Board of Health, Planning Commission, and City Council. It sets retail, or limits retail hours, I should say, to Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and on Sundays, 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., which is about as consistent with liquor store hours as you can get. Liquor store hours are a little tighter on Sundays, but other than that, we're as consistent as we can be. And then, it implements other provisions of Minnesota statutes, Chapter 342. And then, I'll just quickly highlight some of the other items that are not in this ordinance but are being addressed through the Office of Cannabis Management's rulemaking process, so things like product packaging and labeling, product storage, inventory tracking, establishes a complaint process. The rulemaking, the rulemaking standards will also include minimum standards for business security, alarm systems, video surveillance, secure transportation, those kinds of things. And will also establish things, items such as environmental controls, odor limits, water and energy use, solid waste disposal, those types of items are all being furthered through the OCM's rulemaking. So, one of the items that we talked about the most, I think, in previous presentations to council was the buffer distances, so I'm going to spend a little time there. Policy direction has been to implement buffer requirements for schools, residential treatment facilities, and attractions within a public park that are regularly used by minors, including a playground or athletic field, to be known as park attractions for short. The Planning Commission recommended a 300-foot buffer distance, consistent with regulations for liquor stores, while the Advisory Board of Health recommended adopting the maximum distances permitted under the state law. So, that would have been, the maximum permitted under state laws, 1,000 feet for schools, 500 feet for the other uses. Based on all of that input and additional council discussion back in August, the draft ordinance includes the distances you see on the right-hand side of the table there. So, actually, let me back up to the existing buffers for other license types. So, the hemp product retailer, when that was adopted back in 2022, included a 500-foot buffer distance. Several previous discussions we've had here, the council has shown support for reducing that to 300 feet to be consistent with liquor. The medical marijuana chapter is being deleted entirely, so that's why you see that struck through there. And then, the ordinance includes these new buffer distances for cannabis retail, exclusive cannabis retailers, also known as a dispensary. So, 500 feet for schools, 300 feet for park attractions and residential treatment facilities. And then, something that's new that we didn't discuss as much is a separation buffer between cannabis businesses. So, this would be, in addition to those buffers from the sensitive uses, also putting in place a 300-foot buffer between cannabis businesses. Without, and staff felt that without a cap on the number of retail licenses, a spacing requirement is another way to get at avoiding an over-concentration of cannabis businesses in any particular retail area of the city. So, I'll just, real quickly, wanted to pull up this map, which is hard to read at this scale, but just the colorful areas are the zoning districts within the city that allow a retail use. So, that's where can, the colored blobs you see up there are basically all of the zoning districts where a cannabis business could go. This map, for simplicity, does not show any of the buffer circles. The map gets very busy. But the separation ordinance, I think, gets at any concern there might be of, you know, numerous cannabis businesses opening in any one area of the city. I think in particular, I think about the smaller commercial districts, 90th and Penn, France and Old Chocopee, some of those, you know, the Lindell Avenue corridor in general, especially where you have so many kind of smaller buildings where cannabis business might want to open, just ensuring that those corridors don't become overwhelmed with cannabis businesses. That said, 300 feet is not that great of a distance. We're talking about a half a block. That's all I have for you on my presentation. I know we're limited on time tonight. This round of the code amendments completes the first phase of anticipated amendments overall. Staff will likely come before the council again to modify other parts of the ordinance or other parts of city code as state regulations and procedures are finalized.
Thank you, Mr. Brillard. Council, questions of Mr. Brillard, Councilmember Delisandro, then Councilmember Lohman.
Just a real quick one, Mr. Brillard. Good to see you. Matt, always. Regarding your buffer zone, I just wanted to make sure I was clear. You're suggesting that the, the distance, that we adopt, that the distance that we're setting up is not just for those buffers from those explicit locations, but between each other as well, correct? Did I read that? Am I interpreting that correctly?
You did interpret that correct.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Lohman.
Mayor, I just got a question on the buffer zone. How's it work with malls that have, have stories?
Yeah. So, that is a great question. I should have anticipated that one a little more.
If you don't know now, we don't have to talk about it.
No. I can say, I'm sorry, Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, I can say that, as written, it's, the distance would only be measured horizontally. It would not kind of take, take into consideration a vertical separation at, at a, at a large commercial property like a mall.
Well, thank you for that and all of your presentations that you've given.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have a limitation or a distance separation for liquor stores currently?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, there is not currently a separation ordinance for liquor stores.
Okay. And did we, when we had tobacco, did we, do we have one for tobacco?
No, I don't. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, no, I don't believe so, although there were, prior to the sunsetting of tobacco licenses, there weren't any buffer distances. They were being studied as part of that effort, but then I believe the council instead chose to go the route of sunsetting tobacco license rather than implementing buffers at the time.
And am I correct in understanding, this was not previously discussed? This is a new thing that was inserted?
Councilmember Nelson, that is correct. There was some internal discussion to that. There was some internal discussion to that. As we weren't sure whether the council was going to be inclined to pursue license limits, there, it seemed to make sense, you know, when not adopting a cap on the number of licenses to offer that additional separation between cannabis businesses, just to avoid overconcentration.
Council, additional questions? Councilmember Muah.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you bring up the map again?
Yeah. And I, Mayor, Councilmember Muah, I do have some additional slides if you do want to see it overlaid with any of the buffers.
Sure, yeah, if you got the 300 buffers, that'd be great.
Yep.
Because just my thinking, as I'm thinking through this, is the 300 buffer between cannabis businesses, you know, is there, is that going to naturally limit? It wouldn't naturally limit, and so I'm just thinking about competition and opportunities for competition and that kind of thing, so that's just.
Yeah, we'll see. I may have a map here where not exactly what you're looking to get at, but maybe you can help illustrate that. So, apologize, I'm going to have to jump through a handful of extra slides here. Oh, not too many. So there's the citywide map with the potential buffer distances on there. So in the ordinance is the 500-foot buffer, so if you're looking at that, that's kind of the middle ring out of the 300, 500, and 1,000. It may help to look at the next map, which is a little more zoomed in, kind of on the 98th Street and Lindell area. So you see there the three different distances illustrated. Like I said earlier, 300, the 300 feet that is in the, what's being proposed for the separation ordinance between cannabis businesses represents a distance of about a half a block.
Sure, thank you.
Council, anything additional? All right. Thank you, Mr. Billard. Don't go far, we may have additional questions, but first, this is a public hearing, and I'm going to open the public hearing on item 4.2, a public hearing regarding city code amendments, the cannabis business licensing regulations. Is there anyone in the council chambers who wishes to speak to item 4.2 this evening? Ms. Holsman, do we have anyone on the line wishing to speak to item 4.2?
There is no one online, Mr. Mayor.
Last call for anybody in the chambers. Council, no one on the line wishing to speak to item 4.2, nobody in the chambers coming forward. I would look for a motion to close a public hearing on item 4.2. Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember DeLisandro to close the public hearing on item 4.2. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries 6-1, closing the public hearing on items 4.2. So council, any additional questions or comments of Mr. Billard on this? Councilmember Lohman.
Well, I've got some comments here that I just wanted to make, and again, want to thank staff, their hard work on this particular item. Not that I'm opposed to anyone using cannabis or any of the future uses that these businesses may end up employing in the future, but I do agree with the Advisory Board of Health, as Councilmember Carter had mentioned a while before, much more succinctly than I did, or I'm going to do today, but I am not going to be, for those reasons and many other reasons, I'm not going to be supporting this motion today as it's written. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As I've said before, I would prefer that we just mimic liquor. They're both intoxicating substances. I don't have data in front of me, but my understanding is far more people use liquor than they use cannabis. And I also, since we don't have buffers between liquor stores, I believe the marketplace is probably taking care of that, that there's only so much liquor that'll be sold in one area. There'll be so much weed that's sold in one area. I don't know that we need a buffer between stores. I do think there's some things to look at in the future, because I do worry about, you know, some of the retail with what we're trying to do, particularly on like Lindell, and making a walkable community and locking in some businesses there. You know, do we, are we running into an issue in that area? But I don't support the distances between the buffers, and I can get over the different one regarding liquor. It just makes no sense to me to have staff have to have two different distances. Just, if it's a half-block, come on, like, just make it as easy as possible.
Thanks for your comments, Councilmember. Councilmember Muah.
Thank you, Mayor. I would have to agree with Councilmember Nelson. I think the additional buffer between businesses is just additional government overreach, and we don't need it. We'll see what happens when the market plays out, and I think it will be just like liquor, where it'll spread out just like it does now. So additional steps that staff doesn't need to deal with, additional steps that we don't need to deal with, I would be supportive of removing that particular piece.
Additional questions, council comments? And I will say, in relation to both of those comments, so the buffer is 14.280A, and could be easily severed off, so it could be separated out if we end up there, and if that's what your motion kind of leads to, that's an option, so. Mr. Verbrugge?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council members, if I may, just to help you with reference, it's in your agenda packet on page 140, and if there was an interest in offering a motion, I would recommend that motion to be, to strike the last clause, so strike or another licensed cannabis retail business. And you may want to process that motion before considering the motion for the full ordinance.
Thank you. Councilmember Rebus.
Yeah, it's just a comment, a candid comment to what I just heard of my fellow council members state. It is true that liquor stores don't have any distances between them, but it's automatically, you don't see two liquor stores, one on top of another. But if any of the council members have visited Colorado, California, in places where they sell pot, they're all in just one area. And the people sleeping on the streets, the people that are using cannabis, and not only using that, they graduate to something stronger, right, quite fast. And if that's what we're looking for in an area that the city has been planning to have a beautiful walking area as Lindell, that's, at least that's what I read on the 10-year plan to embellish the Lindell corridor. If you're going to put a bunch of kind of sale places in there, the potential of a place becoming what has happened in other states that we don't talk about is there. So keeping a distance 300 feet, fine, I would go for it, not having it at all, but that's just me. I know I'm facing the reality that this is here to stay, however, just not having any distances between that, it creates problems, really. I would be willing to take a couple of you guys and pay it out of my pocket to go visit California or Colorado, places that sell the stuff. I would be willing to do that so that we can have an experience what I'm talking about. Do we want that in Bloomington? Let's face it, it's a reality. Drugs are what they are. It's addictive. It is addictive. And then, you know, the health, I forgot the doctor's name, but our own doctor in the health and wellness, Dr. Kelly, exactly, even he admits that we're having drug problems in our high schools. And we push these, like, yes, it's going to be tax revenue, but that's what we're thinking about. We're not thinking about the consequences of our youth. And some probably, some older people that try it for the first time and they get hooked on it. And then six months later, they're using crack or whatever is out there on the streets. Is that what we're looking for, really? Search your hearts, guys. And really, I will be willing to take you guys to see those places in California and Colorado so that you can experience the reality of this. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson and Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. One, I'm very concerned about people who have drug addiction and substance abuse disorders. I have many people in my family that have experienced that, so I agree with the concerns. However, I just pulled up a map. For what it's worth, it's called Weed Maps. They're multiple blocks apart. We're talking about 300 feet is what we're talking about? They're not three, they're not within 300 feet. I mean, I'm looking at the map. I mean, I don't entirely disagree with you, but the data shows differently. I mean, maybe those two are close to each other, but... Thanks. And I think that, you know, I actually agree with you on Lindell. I think that's a zoning issue of whether or not that's what we want on that district. We talked about, you know, things like the pawn shops and things. Is that what we want on Lindell, or what we envision as a potential sort of downtown-ish type area, walkable community? Is that what we want there? I think it's a great question that Councilmember Rebus brings up about what we want for our community. I just don't think the 300 feet is going to do anything, and I don't think there's going to be a concentration of them, because I think most of the people in our suburban community, unlike a downtown urban area, you know, are going to drive there. They're going to go to the one closest to them, just like they probably go to the closest liquor store to them, you know? I don't, I don't think people drive all the way across the city to go to a different liquor store, although, what was that one, Sid's Discount Liquor? I do know people that drove there, so. Yeah, no, but it's Mervin, so I don't mean to disparage them, a great, great place, but recently bought out in the last couple of years. All I'm saying is, the marketplace is going to put as many of these places in as the marketplace demands. It's legal, you can agree with it or not, and I just don't see that that particular portion of the ordinance has that much merit to it. And it's, again, I'm more for consistency with the liquor, because liquor has proven over a long time to be a very harmful product that a lot of people enjoy without having all of those harms.
Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a quick question. Is the buffer, the buffers between locations, is that common in other communities? And I think I saw Minneapolis has like a 500-foot buffer between locations, and I guess I'm just curious if that's pretty standard in communities, or if it's more unique.
Mayor, Councilmember Carter, I don't know that it's fairly common. I did see that it was in Minneapolis's draft ordinance, although I think in their council deliberation, I don't know if it made it into the, I don't know if it survived into the final ordinance. I do know that Minneapolis staff included that in their draft ordinance, because they do have a separation ordinance for liquor stores. They were trying to mimic their regulations for liquor stores.
Okay. Well, I will say, this one is probably not the hill I'm going to die on, I'm willing to die on, but I will say that I would really like my colleagues on council to reconsider the buffer distance with schools. And I totally understand the desire to want to have consistency with liquor. I think if we were to, if we were starting from scratch with liquor right now, I'm going to guess most people up here, if the Advisory Board of Health, our Department of Health, the school district were telling us, hey, it needs to be a thousand-foot buffer, we would absolutely do a thousand-foot buffer. And so I just don't think, I don't think we should increase, I guess, harm to children because of liquor. Do you know what I mean? Like, it's like, it's a policy that's been in place, and we can't really do much about that now, because if we did change it, we'd probably have a lot of non-compliance. But I just don't, I don't think it's a strong enough rationale, like consistency across the buffers, to go against what the Advisory Board of Health, the school district, our department, our public health department is telling us that is needed to help protect kids in our community. To me, I just can't rationalize that, and I think this is the hill that I'm going to die on for this piece of policy. So, yes, otherwise, I would be supportive, so, thank you.
Council, additional comments? Councilmember DeLisandro.
For context, Buck Liquors and United Liquors at 90th and Penn sit within 500 feet of each other, and I think they're both doing really well, so just going to throw that out there. Neither of them are by a school, however, and I get that. I have no problem supporting a thousand-foot distance. I just think that the challenge I have with that is simply that I, I think we're adding in, generally speaking, I think we're adding into code something that gets handled through other enforcement functions. So, for example, the ability to advertise, the ability to enter the store, the ability to, you know, the things that you put on a licensee to comply with the law. To me, those are the right, you know, carrots and sticks, if you will, than to potentially carve out parts of the city and say, thou shall not pass. Like, that's the only reason why I haven't been super supportive of it, because I think it's those other measures that should be used. I mean, I understand on tobacco, as an example, if you look at the way that the Europeans chose to go after it, personally, I think an 18-point font on the side of the thing in black and white that says, "It kills you," is probably a bigger deterrent than how far away you are from a school to buy the stuff. Now, I could be wrong about that, and I'm not a policy expert on public health, so I agree that deferring to our public health experts is probably a good idea. But, so if the council, if we want to make a couple of modifications to what we have in front of us, one being that we increase the school buffer, and the other one being that we eliminate the between businesses buffer, I would pass that tonight.
Thank you, council member, and that's actually just where I was headed.
Sorry, I guess I should say, Mr. Mayor, I would vote yes for that tonight. I don't get to pass anything on my own, sorry.
Understood. Here's what I'm going to recommend, council. We've got a couple of ideas that have come up, a couple of different possibilities. What I would like to suggest perhaps is that we take them kind of parsed out, the first, the proposed couple of changes, maybe parse them out, see where we land on that, and then look at the, where we stand after we consider those two things, and then look at the ordinance just in general. So for example, and I'm scouring this, and I can't find it very quickly here, but where the specific, the buffer language in the line, if you could find that for me?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council members, both of the issues that you're currently discussing are in 14.280A, which is on page 140 of the packet.
There it is.
So A has both the separator from schools in the first clause before the comma, and then the question about separation of retail businesses at the last clause after the comma.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I appreciate your suggestion for approach. I will say that if you ask me these individually, my answers will be different than if you answer, if you ask me them together, and my suggestion is someone just make a motion to do the 1,000 feet that was recommended and remove the distance between them and see if that passes or not. Second, I don't make motions.
I'll make the motion.
Councilmember Carter, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, I just have to find it.
Well, actually, why don't we carve it out first with the, in 14280A, and change those numbers from 500 to 1,000? And I think we want to do this first, and then do the, if we make these changes, and then do the whole thing.
Oh, okay, okay.
If that makes sense.
Yes. Okay, so I would like to make a motion to change the language
Yes.
in 14.280A, so to change within 300, I got to read it here, 500 feet of a school to 1,000 feet of a school.
And? Do you want to do them separately, or do you want to do them together? Do them together, okay.
And strike the 300 from another licensed cannabis retail business.
Second. So we've got a motion by Councilmember Carter, and a second by Councilmember Lohman.
Yeah.
Are we clear on that, on Ms. Mandershot?
Mayor, I think it would be good for the record if Councilmember Carter could perhaps read how she wants it to be stated, so that we are all clear.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make a suggestion, too, is that you put the word "and" before park attraction, and then a period there, if that's what you're intending to do?
Okay. Do I need to say the number again, or just read it? The 14 point? Okay, so I would move to change the language in Section 14.280, to read, "No retail registration under this code shall be granted to any location within 1,000 feet of a school or within 300 feet of a residential treatment facility or park attraction." Period.
And I'll second that again.
All right, so is everybody... All right, so is everybody clear? We've got a motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember Loman. Uh, if you're looking at your packet, you understand what we're doing here on, on page one forty. So we've, uh, Councilmember Carter is proposing that it be, we go from five hundred feet within the school to a thousand feet from a school, and then basically eliminates the three hundred foot buffer around another licensed cannabis retail business. Everybody clear on that? We've got a motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember Loman. Any council discussion on this? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six one, so we have made the changes in fourteen point two zero, section A. Now, would anybody like to move the, the ordinance as we have in front of us? Councilmember DeLaSandro.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt an ordinance amending chapters thirteen, fourteen, and appendix A of the city code as stated in the meeting related to cannabis business regulations.
Second.
As amended.
We have a motion by Councilmember DeLaSandro, a second by Councilmember Loman to adopt the ordinance amending chapters thirteen, fourteen, and appendix A of the city code as amended related to cannabis business regulations. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries six one with Councilmember Rivas in opposition. Councilmember DeLaSandro, summary publication, please.
I move to adopt a resolution authorizing summary publication of an ordinance amending chapters thirteen, fourteen, and appendix A as amended of the city code related to the cannabis business regulations.
Motion by Councilmember DeLaSandro, second by Councilmember Muah for summary publication on item four point two. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six one with Councilmember Rivas in opposition. Thank you, Ms. Brillert. Thanks for your patience with this and for getting this across the finish line. So thank you much. Now, Council, we will move on to item five, our organizational business. And our first item is item five point one, a study item regarding the RS One zoning district review, our third crack at it, part three. Nick Johnson is here with us this evening. Good evening, Mr. Johnson, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Thanks for having me back. So I'll just jump right into this. And again, for reference, the RS One zoning district is our large lot residential zoning district in our zoning code. So just to outline the process that we have pursued or executed to date. So this is a project on the Planning Commission work plan. Um, it was first presented to the Planning Commission in February of this year, and the first city council study session also occurred in February. We did hit the pause button on this project while there was some state legislation around minimum lot sizes and other things that was occurring, that was active at the legislature in order to find out what the results of that were. That did not come to pass. Um, and so we picked this project back up and presented it to you, uh, in August of twenty twenty four. We got really close to reaching a, a good amount of consensus amongst the majority of the council on most of the issues, and so that was appreciated and helpful. Um, as with most zoning conversations, they get pretty into the weeds and into the details. So we do have a couple of final items to discuss here for you on tonight's agenda. Um, just to remind everyone, the current RS One zoning district, it's currently applies to one hundred and sixteen properties, all concentrated along the west side of Normandale Boulevard, um, primarily in three neighborhoods. There are two standalone lots that have this zoning designation as well, that sought that proactively as a private action. So in terms of what occurred in the August meeting, consensus was reached from staff's interpretation and perspective on amending the district intent statement, removing the median site with requirement in both RS One and R one A zoning district, as well as removing the prevailing setback in both of those districts that would bring consistency amongst, um, all of our low-density residential districts. So that's appreciated as someone who's been working on streamlining for a while. Um, there were some use changes that the council, the majority of the council were supportive of by allowing two family dwellings in RS One and prohibiting a few institutional uses that staff felt were not appropriate in the RS One district. Um, and then there was also a positive discussion around affirming criteria for evaluating rezoning requests, which is also appreciated as those responding to those inquiries, processing those phone calls. So where we did not reach majority consensus as of yet had to do with the minimum lot size requirement and as well as the approach on enhanced district-specific environmental standards. And those standards could range from several different things. Um, and we can certainly talk about those things, and I will here in a minute. But those are the two items that effectively we needed to come back to get more feedback from you all prior to scheduling a public hearing. So we have these two issues where we don't have consensus. So what does that mean? Um, our approach to try and build consensus going from there to try and establish where the majority of the council wants to take this project was to create effectively six options that hinged on these two issues of lack of consensus. So again, the first issue is minimum lot size. The existing lot, minimum lot requirement in RS One is thirty-three thousand square feet. That's three quarters of an acre. Uh, there was some correspondence from the public and discussion dating back to May of twenty twenty three when we made the amendments to the R one zoning district, which represents the bulk of the low-density residential properties in Bloomington, to look at a half an acre effectively minimum lot size for our large lot district. And the number that they, that we studied and that they suggested was a twenty-two thousand square foot lot, which by metro standards effectively still would meet kind of the informal criteria of what we see for a large lot district. And then the third option to evaluate from a, from a perspective of lot size was actually just reducing the minimum lot size to align it with our R one district standards. Uh, there is the R one A district. Some people sometimes ask about that district. It only applies to seven properties. And the reason why we have a separate one there is that those are on septic systems. They're not served by sanitary sewer. Um, then the secondary issue, which creates the, the three B options, or the A and B options, is whether or not to have environmental standards, enhanced environmental standards that are district-specific. Um, and for the purposes of this ordinance, these ordinance options, I want to stress that these are concepts. So the city council could certainly provide more direction as to what other forms of district-specific environmental standards, you know, you would like us to look at. Um, but the two things we focused on where we think, you know, had the greatest potential impact as it relates to infill development and future site disturbing activity in these areas was impervious surface. Um, so all structures, all grading, all kind of miscellaneous, um, uh, pertances or other things that you build on a residential site effectively create impervious surface and have impacts, um, to vegetation, to other things, habitat. Um, and so that was one thing that we focused on. The other thing that we focused on was tree preservation. And so we have an ordinance that requires sites to provide a tree preservation plan if they are splitting a lot or subdividing in some way, and those regulations apply for two years. What we chose to focus on with that was creating a lower trigger for reforestation. And so our base requirement is that you're allowed to remove fifty percent of the significant trees on a site before you have to start a replacement campaign effectively. Um, and what you could do in a district that had district-specific environmental standards is lower that threshold to discourage more tree removal. Um, you could do other things such as raise the reforestation requirement, just the ratio of every inch that you lose, you have to put two back in. Um, you could also expand, um, tree preservation requirements to other activities, such as just a building permit. I will note on that front, um, uh, that it tends to take more staff involvement and administration to do that. It also tends to add some cost on projects in terms of requiring a tree survey for all, for additional forms of just home improvements, additions, and, you know, leading up to new dwellings as well. So there's other things that you could look at. We also talked about, uh, and I should have mentioned this earlier, forgive me, that paired with this RS One district zoning study, which wrapped up in June, was a, a study of our citywide environmental standards that applied to residential properties. As part of that effort, we looked at tree preservation, steep slope or steep slope standards. We looked at landscaping requirements as well as things that can be done to improve habitat. The consensus coming out of that from both the Planning Commission and council was basically to affirm that the city's standards are quite strong, especially in comparison to other fully-built peer communities. Many of those communities don't have a tree preservation requirement or especially steep slope requirement. Um, in addition to the fact that the city has taken other proactive measures to protect environmental or sensitive resources, rather, especially the Minnesota River with our bluff protection. So at that point, and that ordinance was adopted in June, that was the citywide look. Um, uh, that wrapped up in June and was more modest improvements, I guess you could say, or just clarifications, just to make the administration of it more effective, basically. So, um, sorry, just to get back to what else could be looked at, you know, there's other things that cities could do. Um, some of those things may or may not be popular. There's discussion around ways to support wildlife habitat in terms of fencing or other barriers where wildlife move, um, requiring different various forms of landscaping on properties within habitat corridors, um, is something that you could do. But all of these, as I said before, carry with them some level of staff implementation and administration above and beyond what the city is currently doing. Um, and so that, hopefully, that provides kind of a, a baseline overview of how we develop the six optional ordinances that we prepared for you as part of this process. I think, I just want to emphasize that the ones that have the enhanced environmental factors are more viewed as a concept at this point. I guess what I'm saying is don't get married to the very specific numbers on the impervious piece or the tree preservation standard, but we can collect your thoughts. So based on these standards, um, one visual that's been helpful to staff as we think about this in terms of what, and what we're trying to do tonight to you is we think that there has been a lot of, uh, good work that has been done on the RS One district as we approach any one of our projects on the Planning Commission work plan. We always want to try and extract the most value for what the task is and make things better. Um, and so as part of our analysis of these six options, a helpful visual for us was thinking about them in terms of a spectrum of change. What represents the most modest amount of change? What represents moderate change and what represents significant change? Uh, the options that have the environmental standards represent a more moderate to significant change, and the options that decrease lot sizes represent a more significant change versus a moderate change. Um, so if you're keeping the lot size, minimum lot sizes the way they are, it's effectively kind of holding true to what the existing development pattern is for those one hundred and sixteen lots and kind of carrying forward with that. The other thing I would add about this visual is that we're talking about change. That's kind of the main thing here. But another thing to think about, two other things actually, is complexity, so regulatory complexity. We spend, have spent a lot of oxygen talking about the value of trying to make things less complex from a, a land use regulatory environment. Um, so that's, that's one aspect to it, you know, while, you know, we don't get questions about the RS One district every day or even every week. Uh, but when you do get the question, and if there are standards that are applicable to that district that you're not used to working through just as a staff person, you know, working with our community members, um, there is the potential to certainly trip you up or miss that nuance or that detail now. We certainly would strive not to do that, of course. Uh, but just kind of adding in that piece anecdotally about the regulatory complexity. And then finally, is I think maybe the bigger issue potentially contend with is that there's one hundred and sixteen of these properties that exist today. If you start to impose standards that are more strict than what exists today, there is the potential to create legal nonconformity. And so what that means is that what was potentially legal or created under the previous standards, um, while, yes, legally nonconforming, so certainly can be replaced, uh, but could have the potential to, um, impact or affect, uh, future improvements or changes to the site as people continue to move forward. So change is one thing, regulatory complexity another, and then legal nonconformity is another thing. So based on these factors and what staff is striving, striving to do for you tonight is provide a recommendation, have you react to our recommendation. Um, uh, and what we're recommending is to pursue ordinance option one A. Uh, and the reason, more broadly speaking, is that we just think it's the most straightforward path to make positive use of the policy work and analysis that we've done to date, build off the consensus that has been reached. Um, uh, but in addition to that, getting more specific, the reasons that we recommend ordinance option A is that there's been some discussion about by lowering lot sizes, there is the potential to create infill development, which certainly your community development department and planning department have been supportive of. Um, but, uh, there is also conversely the potential to look at going to this district um, away from R one and what those rules represent. So one thing to think about. Um, related, related to that point, rezoning does carry with it a lot of staff, council, planning commission capacity, um, and sometimes can be contentious or not kind of universally supported, um, in those areas. Uh, legal nonconformity, I just spoke to that piece of it, so I won't, uh, go over that again. The approach to environmental protection, so as we presented to you with our previous study of our environmental standards, um, uh, an industry, best practice, I guess, from staff's perspective is that the regulations that are protecting natural resources or environmental features or sensitive assets, uh, they really should be geared towards that specific physical feature of the land or whatever that sensitive feature is, as opposed to doing it in a base zoning district on a lot-by-lot basis. Um, one of the things we talked about with the rezoning criteria is the importance or value of having neighborhood continuity of the base zoning. Um, and so you could have a, a situation where, uh, you know, half of the lots within a neighborhood might have this feature, the other half may not have this sensitive feature or this characteristic. Um, but because of the nature of, uh, planning and striving for more regulatory conformity within these defined areas, um, uh, there can be an issue there. So we strive to have it kind of apply citywide. That's how all of our regulations function right now. When there is instances of geographic-specific asset that you're trying to protect, and I'll keep pointing back to the Minnesota River because the city established a bluff protection overlay district, uh, you can look to potentially, uh, developing or adopting an overlay district. I will reiterate, I wasn't here at that time, but it was a resource-intensive effort and one that has paid great dividends, and the city should be, um, affirmed for or celebrated for. Um, but that's just an example of more of a, a asset-specific or a feature-specific zoning tool in the form of an overlay. Um, last thing I'll say about just the approach to environmental protection is that, uh, just from what I learned in working with our water resource and our engineering staff, Minnesota is one of the strongest regulatory environments when it comes to stormwater. The Wetland Conservation Act is very strong. The city's shoreline ordinance, which is enforced by the DNR, requiring buffers from public identified public waters, which includes Non-Mout Creek, are very strong. These are not negotiable, uh, regulations. Um, and then in addition to requiring rate, volume, and treatment, uh, even down to single-family residential projects now, the watershed district. If you're building a new home, you have to do some stormwater management on your site. And so I think it's more of a matter that we feel fairly confident or strongly that our existing regulations are working and, uh, do protect a, a number of things, including our steep slope ordinance and other things. So that's where we're at with that one. Uh, public engagement, you know, this wasn't talked about as much in our previous sessions, but one lingering thought in staff's mind as this has been kind of progressing is that we've strived, uh, up until this point to carry forward a very comparable, uh, public engagement posture or effort with respect to these RS One properties as we did with the R one. And the reason is, is that we did not want to provide, uh, we wanted to have an equitable and similar, uh, approach to how we were engaging with these residents of these two different zoning districts. Um, the problem with that way of thinking, or one of the issues, is that it's a much smaller grouping of lots that would make, uh, direct engagement much more feasible or, uh, uh, actually able to handle. And so one of the questions that we have as staff is if you're leaning towards making more drastic changes to the base zoning district of RS One, uh, from a staff perspective, it probably warrants some additional direct conversation with some of those property owners, given that it is a more manageable number to contend with. And just as a reminder, the R one lots, there's over twenty-one thousand five hundred properties in Bloomington, low-density residential properties that are R one. So doing a direct mailer, for example, or doing, um, you know, engagement sessions at strategic locations all over town, I suppose, um, was deemed less feasible at that time. Um, and then finally, just from a cost-benefit analysis, so I'll get back to the one hundred and sixteen lot piece of this. Um, we think every zoning study is worthy and that we should, uh, look at all of these things on an ongoing basis. So we appreciate the spirit of what's going forward here. Um, we also do want to present for councils' consideration that if we go in more complex directions and do want to provide additional staff capacity and PC capacity and city council capacity, um, that we're being cognizant of the fact that it represents about half a percent of the residential lots in Bloomington just from a bulk numbers standpoint. And certainly if more lots got rezoned to that, that increases that number. But overall, um, there may be other, uh, projects, um, that may warrant more additional of that focus. there may be other projects that may warrant more additional of that focused time and study. So we would present to you option 1A for your consideration. We certainly can answer any questions about option 1A or all of the other options that we presented to you. In terms of next steps, I'll wrap up here, you have a long agenda, sorry. If we do get consensus to move forward, if for some of the more simpler options, we could bring something forward at a public hearing in December for planning commission and January for city council. As I mentioned, oops, more complex may warrant some public engagement, that could affect schedule. And then if consensus changes to the RS1 district are not supported, two options there, we could, you could offer additional direction to staff, or you could effectively consider the study complete. So with that, Mayor, I'll take and council members, I'll take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Councilmember Lohman and Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. I was not here, I did get an opportunity to listen to the conversation that this group had while I was missing, missing. What I wanted to say was just an excellent conversation back and forth in terms of really, I think, really two really great ideas. So just to be succinct, I know we've got a lot on the, on the agenda here, Mayor, is that, you know, I really like this idea of, that Councilmember DeLaSandro brought forward with this idea of really kind of a unique new zoning thing, let's call it R, or, or just trying to take the RS1 and trying to make it into kind of this new environmental type code. I, I conceptually love that, that, that idea. And so, so I'm in favor of, of that, that type of idea, especially in terms of the idea of being able to capture multiple environmental structures really across the map. I like that, I like that conceptual idea and how you could layer those things together. Now, on the other hand, I'm really opposed to really kind of trying to change really anything that is with the current RS1 zoning district for really many of the reasons that you have kind of laid out with this 1A. And the thing that, the two things that the kind of, that I'm kind of concerned about is that legal nonconformity. And then also, when you talk about 116 lots out there being about 1%, that just really doesn't make a lot of sense. And one of the things I liked that we talked about in the past was this idea of what the city of Los Angeles did with their wildlife ordinance. And I understand that the, the commitment and the, the amount of money that would take to try to pull something like that off is quite considerable. And so I guess, in summary, what I would say is, you know, conceptually, I like the idea of maybe looking at this idea of, I just don't think we're quite there yet, Mayor, in terms of if we were to look at a new zoning code, that we'd, you know, we'd be able to look at many more properties across the city. We don't have the, you know, I think we laid that out quite well in our last conversation with this idea that we really haven't done an analysis of the private properties to be able to, to really kind of figure out which properties kind of fit together. Now, of course, now I have to admit that that also may create some nonconformity as well, if we went down that route as well. But I just think that, you know, everything we try to do with this RS1 to try to make it something that's really not, I think that's going to be really complicated, difficult, and I just don't know that we really ought to do that. But that's, but I, I do like the conceptual idea of having a, of having a zone like that. So I don't know if that complicates it more or, or makes it better, I don't know.
It certainly doesn't clarify, Councilmember. If you had a, looking at those letters with numbers, what would you, what would you, where would you fall?
Well, I guess I'd have to go with this, this 1A because it just doesn't, you know, I mean, I honestly would like to just do nothing. I'd like to just leave it there, not touch it at all, but that's not an option, so.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Couple quick questions here. So there are, in the intent statement, three things, there are four things. One is large lot size, but the other three things regarding the environment are wetlands, steep slopes, and vegetation. Wetlands and steep slopes, we already have, as you stated, significant tools, ordinances in place that would apply to RS1 and, and also apply to R1 and apply to commercial and industrials, that, that accurate.
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, that's correct. The only caveat I'll say to that is that our steep slope ordinance does not apply to commercial and industrial properties, it's just the low-density residential sites.
For all residential properties, it already applies. So to have that in the intent is no different than what we have in R1, there's no difference. They, they apply either way. Vegetation, so trees, there were two things that, that were potentially environmentally different, impervious surface ratio would change and the tree ratio would change. So on the R1, it was 50% of the trees and that would drop to 25% if you're going to take them out, and impervious surface was 25% to 35% or something like that. Is it possible to simply just change R1 to have something that said lots up to 22,000 square feet, can have an impervious surface of this, above 22,000 can have an impervious surface of this, and similar to the tree, could you just do R1 zoning that said lots of this size could be up to 50%, lots over this size could be 25%? Could you just change R1 and incorporate those two things easily into it?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, you could change the base standards for stormwater management and, or the impervious hardcover as well as trees for those other districts based on lot size. You could do that. One of the things I, and in fact, we do actually do have a standard for that already. If you look at our impervious limits, there is that provision around the exceeding 12,000 square feet in impervious, that's for the very large lots. That's like saying you can't go beyond this, I don't care how many acres you have, you get, you have a cap.
If you have five acres, you can't cover four of them.
So effectively, that's currently our only lot size driven criteria as it relates to impervious today. The, I'll circle back to my comment about regulatory complexity, the more boxes and evaluation criteria you're doing on every single inquiry and building project you do, you know, the more potential there is for error, complexity. The other thing I would say, and this is the part I'm less involved with or don't understand as well, is that the city's, citywide stormwater management permit, the MS4 permit, part of one of the inputs on that, my understanding, and sorry, Julie, I didn't warn you about this discussion, I suppose, but it has to do with modeling what the impervious limit is on the bulk of your residential properties. That's kind of already an input in our permit modeling, if that makes sense, is my understanding.
And I appreciate that complexity, and that's what I'm trying to get to, is reducing complexity, because as I've stated previously, I would like to eliminate RS1 and just go to R1 and incorporate those two minor changes into it and just have one zoning district that you had to know and not have to know whether or not there are two. With regards to Councilmember Lohman's concerns about nonconformity, I may have, I may have understood nonconformity different than him. I thought the nonconformity would come up if other areas went to rezone to RS1. And then there, because we, we looked at examples of other neighborhoods where 40% of the lots would meet the standards, 60% would, or vice versa, or whatever. That's where I thought the nonconformity would come in, is if we, if we somehow allowed this to expand beyond the current 116 parcels.
So Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, thank you for that question. It's a good one and a good clarification. So that, that earlier discussion about how you could rezone properties even if they weren't meeting the minimum lot size, the city has a lot of discretion when it comes to, and by city, I mean you all, as the city council have a lot of discretion of what zoning districts you apply to parcels. Us as staff, when we're looking at issuing a building permit, we have no discretion about if your site exceeds your maximum impervious limit and you want to build a new kitchen off the side of your house, what are you, what are you going to remove to make the difference? So, or they can, you know, try and seek a variance or something and then come before you, I suppose. But, or the planning commission, rather. But yeah, so that's kind of the nuanced distinction, is that you can apply zoning districts to properties that don't meet every, it's not a best practice, that's, again, I've said before, they don't teach you that in planning school.
So if the 116 properties that are RS1 now were rezoned to R1, would they be nonconforming?
I'm, I hesitate to say affirmatively yes in every way, but I believe they would be conforming for the most part, yes.
So we eliminated some of that concern. And then am I correct in understanding, sent maps earlier, that the vast majority of our wetlands and steep slopes are not in RS1 zone, they're already in R1 zones? And so we're already managing these in R1 zoning effectively in the interest of the city and the natural environment?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I'd, I'd say that's fair. You know, Brian Greedle and the water resource staff do a great job of reviewing development permits and building permits as they come through. If there's a known wetland somewhere, they flag it as an issue and they ensure that WACA is followed, which means requiring a buffer. You have to have both minimum and average buffers to the wetland, depending on the type and quality of wetland that it is.
Yeah, yeah. And we have our partners in the, the water groups.
Watershed District?
Watershed District, hey, we're, we're a watershed district too. So, yeah, so and having pulled permits with them, I understand they're, they're looking at things. So you, you laid out like six criteria, and my reason for, again, coming back to the R1 is I think it reduces complexity. It's one zoning district, it's one set of standards, there may be some nuances based on lot size, but that already exists. Two, it eliminates or greatly reduces nonconformity, because all of the current RS1s would conform to R1 or almost all of them would. It eliminates the option or the idea of rezoning other areas. And I think most important, and, and I think back to what Councilmember DeLaSandro said at our last meeting about this, is she was not concerned about the size of the lots, she wanted environmental standards. And this takes us to the staff recommendation of environmental standards throughout the entire community. Apply them everywhere, not just 116 lots, 20-some thousand lots. Let's apply those environmental standards throughout the community and protect the entire community on those things that are important to us. And so that's why I continue to advocate for the R1 zoning district and elimination of the RS1. Thank you.
Council, additional questions? Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I, for the most part, agree with you, Councilmember Nelson, but for, for the sake of where we are right now, I, I will be supportive of the 1A option. This moves us in, I think, the right direction. It gives residents and property owners their rights back, because we're stopping to reduce all the restrictions that we have on there and moving towards that direction. I would love us to be in the R1 all across the city, let people who own property and do what they want to do with their properties without the red tape that we sometimes artificially put on them. But for where we are right now, I think 1A is a great move in that direction, and I think as the city changes, and as we have more things to consider and people who continue to want to live in Bloomington, there will be another opportunity for us to continue to work through this and look at R1 zoning again.
Councilmember DeLaSandro.
I, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have not had very many opportunities where all the things I said in past meetings just kept coming back in this, it's incredible. You'd think I'd be, this is important to me or something, I don't know. Here's the, here's my take on it. My, my challenge with this is, and, and I'm not against, sure, let's go ahead and, and push environmental regulations to a higher level, I love that concept, right? You want to talk about people being nonconforming, we would, half the city would be nonconforming, like tomorrow, right? So we'd have a big, big hurdle to get over that if we push the kind of environmental standards I think we should in the time of climate change. The, the biggest challenge that I have with this, and I appreciate all the work that staff has done, is that we have a tree ordinance, we have an impervious surface ordinance, we have a steep slope ordinance, we have, you know, but, but ecosystems are ecosystems, they are not individual natural resources. We have trouble in this country and frankly, all over the world, because people have consistently looked at natural resources as an individual thing that can be extracted, and they're trying to find the right line to where it doesn't cause environmental catastrophe. But you can't, you can't ask, you know, you can't ask a, a, an ecosystem to only consider, you know, oh, every single property can have an impervious surface of up to X percent. Okay, but when the ecosystem becomes 50% covered, the ecosystem is kind of screwed up, like it is. And that's how we get here, because we look at them through lenses of componentry as opposed to taking a step back and looking at it as a system. And that's the, the main reason why I have been pushing like I have and saying, there are places in Bloomington where we've, these ecosystems still exist and we should probably keep them as ecosystems, because there's just not that many. And I'm sorry that those ecosystems don't exist, you know, over on, like, you know, where I live, at 87 Den Emerson, like, it would be great if it did, but it doesn't, because 50 years ago, somebody decided to bulldoze the damn thing and made it into a manufactured housing set of lots, and that's what you have. Should we keep repeating that, simply because, you know, it's already screwed? I mean, maybe the point we're making here is that we are expecting Bloomington to be infilled, developed, and we are going to use every single space here. And so ecosystem be damned, this area, it's already done. It's a foregone conclusion that this area is a city that will not have. But then why are we spending so much money on our, on our parks and all the other recreation amenities we have? Because let's just do that then, this can be coruscant for all I care, like, sorry, that nerd reference. But the, the fact is that we've decided that one of the hallmarks of being in Bloomington is its preservation of its natural environment. And that's why this has been such a challenge for me, because I just don't understand why it's hard. It feels like it's gotten more complicated, not less complicated, because what I'm saying is there are areas along these corridors, which not from me, but by the DNR and other places, Three Rivers and everybody, there's places along this corridor, and we're doing all this work in Meyer Park and along the Nine Mile Creek, that have significantly different topology, ecology, geology, I'm not trying to rap, it's just, you know, that they have, they're, they're different. And are we going to preserve them or aren't we? And I'm, that's all I'm trying to get at, and I, so if you were asking me, I would like to see us do 1B or 2B, and I would like us to actually sit down and talk about these ecosystems as ecosystems and actually define what makes them unique, the same way that we did the bluff. We said that thing is unique and we should have a, a way to describe it that's separate and distinct from the rest of the city. I think these areas qualify for that. And I'm sorry that they were, zoning was used as opposed to some other mechanism, and I'd be open to not doing zoning and doing some other mechanism if that was appropriate, but I, right now, this is all we have. And so if we wanted to get to something else, I still am suggesting that these areas that we're talking about, defined in RS1, and frankly, I would expand it, as you all know, these areas are the areas that I think deserve a higher level of protection, and that's what I'm trying to get to. We don't have to agree on that, but that, that's kind of where my head's at. Thanks.
Councilmember Reivas.
Just one quick comment. Would it be possible to involve the public on this before we get to vote on it, like in February or, what is it? Is there, is it possible to get the public involved, have a, a public hearing on it? And I know I'm copying you on this, I know you mentioned this last time we spoke about it.
We've been talking about this for years.
Yeah, so, but that would be a wise thing to do. I really don't have a full understanding of what all this is, as my fellow council members do, but on that subject, if, if, would it be possible to get all these things on a hard copy? It's a lot easier for me to carry them around and read them as I go along, so that I can have a better understanding, you know, I don't want to be talking just without any knowledge. But my first thing would be that we could make it accessible to the public before we actually vote on it. Again, I support 1B from just looking at it, but again, I will reiterate that I don't have a full understanding of what all this means, okay? I, I made that much, but thank you.
Mr. Johnson, in terms of next steps with hearings and any public engagement, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Reivas, thanks for those comments. So we certainly can take direction from the council to pursue any level of public engagement. If you want us to mail every property owner and resident of all 116 of those properties, we will. The, I will reiterate that we've been having a nuanced and wonky, in the weeds conversation about zoning for many hours now, and so, I mean, imagine duplicating that conversation with people who deal with, and that's not, no disparagement, it's just that who are not as familiar with the are not as familiar with the regulatory changes that we're contemplating making. And it can create some difficulty, I guess I would say. We will certainly execute whatever engagement with the residents that you want to. It's just, it takes time, number one. And B, sometimes it can upset people for, for not a ton of value on the backend or even significant changes. One of the reasons we recommended option 1A is that we, as a staff, felt comfortable that the changes were not so significant and did not create nonconformity, that we were comfortable moving forward without that direct engagement. That's a line that we, as a staff and our professional judgment, were willing to draw. So hopefully that provides a little bit of feedback there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. So, Council, here's my, here's my take on this. We've been talking about this for hours now, over months now, if not, we might be up to a year. I think we've, we've been talking about this a while. I think it's clear we're not going to come to consensus. We're not going to, we, we have differing opinions. We've got some folks at, at different things and, and we're not going to come to the consensus, I think, that everybody's looking for in terms of one way or the other, or if we're making sizable, I won't say radical, but sizable impactful changes versus just trying to get things, you know, moving forward on this. I, I would argue that if we, if we went with the staff recommendation of 1A for the reasons that Mr. Johnson laid out, not the least of which, as Councilmember Lohman talked about, that we don't then have a ton of nonconforming properties in the city. And as Mr. Johnson talked about, just the, the overall bang for the buck. We're talking about less than, you know, we're, we're talking about a small number of properties in the city of Bloomington affected by this. And my thought is if we're not going to come to consensus on any significant changes, I think rather than getting to a point where the planning, commission's time, our time, staff time goes by the wayside, we move forward with a modest approach outlined in 1A and, and take it for what it is and, and move forward. That's, that's my thought. Councilmember Carter, and then back over to Councilmember De La Sondro.
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, I've just been trying to sit here and have an open mind and like listen to everything. So when I, when I heard you, Councilmember De La Sondro, talking, what I was imagining was like us taking a step back and looking at all the, like, you can look at a Google map and you can see, right, where all the places are that have all the trees in the city. And actually figuring out, like, I don't know, I think of it, I was like, certain areas are like, like we have historic preservation areas, like environmental preservation areas, right? And I think there might be some kind of corridor map that could also guide that. But it's like, it's a bigger conversation. It's not just about RS1, right? It's a, it's about looking at the entire community and saying, okay, like all these neighborhoods around Nine Mile should be designated like environmental protection areas. And these are the things that we're going to ask. And I don't know if it's, like you said, through zoning or through something else, but not just limited to these like 120 or whatever properties it is. And so if we were, and I could see like the Sustainability Commission taking the lead on that, like looking at what other communities across the country have done to overlay some kind of environmental protections on their zoning. Or I, and maybe there's nothing. I don't know. I don't, it's not my area of expertise, but, um, and, yeah. So if that were a partnership with Sustainability and Planning or something, and I think that that would be a really cool project that I would be interested in, I think would be getting more at what you're talking about versus just this little, little tiny area of Bloomington, right? So with that said, I mean, I would be fine going with 1A or 1B, but I would prefer us to have a broader conversation around, and maybe again, have Sustainability Commission look at what other communities have done to really figure out how do you, and maybe, and maybe we're already doing all the things. Maybe, because you said, like, we have very strong standards. So maybe we're already doing all the things that other communities are doing, that are setting, who are at the forefront of this. But, so that's kind of what, what I was, that's where my thoughts are.
Mr. Johnson?
Mayor, if I could just speak really quickly to say one thing, and I don't want to step on any of your discussion, but right now, the Natural Resource Staff is engaged in kicking, or launching the urban forestry plan. And I believe it involves a citywide tree inventory. So that project is going to bring to you a lot more data. And obviously, trees are not the only subset of what's important, all the things that you're talking about. But it's going to be more data than we've had before in the past. And you happen to have the staff expert in the room on that project. And maybe it's part of the budget discussion for all I know.
Councilmember De La Sondro?
So, just for, to back up for a second and remember why we got here, because the thing that 1A doesn't do, I don't think, is solve the problem we were trying to solve originally in the first place. And when I say the problem we were trying to solve, I mean literally the problem we were trying to solve, which was we had the folks of Norman Ridge here really upset that they couldn't get put into RS1 because planning wouldn't put them in RS1 to give them these protections. And they were afraid that with being in R1 that all of those beautiful properties of 22,000 or 25,000 or 33,000 square feet were going to get chopped up by greedy developers. That was, and that's their words, not mine. That's, I'm just using it as the context, right? So, and by the way, that just happened in May of 2023. So it's not like it's that old. It's just, this is recent, right? So, so the point I'm making is 1A doesn't get, passing 1A today doesn't solve that. Getting, going and having this big discussion that might take two or three years doesn't solve that either because they'll get chopped up long before that happens potentially. I'm not saying it will. I'm of the opinion that even the zoning changes we did to R1 aren't moving fast enough and we're not making the gains that we want to in housing. So this is why I didn't approve, I didn't approve it and I didn't support it in the first place because I didn't think it was the lever we needed to pull. But that's the way things are. So, so the, we can, we can pass 1A today. But it doesn't, it doesn't help the original problem, which is if, if the folks from Norman Ridge came and said to Nick tomorrow, I would like to petition that this particular area be moved into RS1, he would deny it on, on nonconformity if I, if I remember correctly. That was the point in the first place. So...
I don't have authority.
Well, my point is you wouldn't recommend it to us and most likely, maybe I wouldn't get the support up here. I have no idea. But that, that, that's the thing. And so the reason I've been harping on this is because this is the lever that's in front of us. And I feel a sense of urgency and expeditiousness about this because I know developers want those pieces of land specifically. I know we talk about doing it citywide and this, that, and the other thing, but let's be honest, guys. They're chomping at the bit to get at those pieces of land. And I think they have environmental significance. It's not that I want to preserve the benefit of these homeowners. It's not that. It's that they have significance because for whatever reason, they've been left more naturally available than the rest of Bloomington has. So, you know, whatever we did, we passed tonight, it, it isn't going to solve the problem that kind of brought this whole thing up in the first place. I hope that we can get there before something happens that we can't take back.
And to be clear, Councilmember, this is a study item. We're not passing anything tonight. We, it's staff.
No, no, I understand. I understand.
Staff recommendation.
Yep, for sure. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson, and then Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. To Councilmember De La Sondro's point that she would like a different tool than zoning, I would point out that according to this, steep slopes are defined by city code. It's an ordinance, not zoning. Significant natural or vegetation is determined by the city forester, not zoning. It's the city forester. Wetlands are defined by Minnesota Rules, Chapter 8420, state law, well managed, as we've talked about already, not zoning. The only thing that is covered by zoning is the size of the lot and impervious surface. And so I completely agree with my colleague about doing this in more areas and protecting areas. And that's why I believe it should be done through ordinances as we are doing it now. We should protect all those lots. And we shouldn't have to use zoning to go in and rezone Southbrook because it's bordered by a marsh and Nine Mile Creek. We shouldn't have to go in and rezone that. And then when we do that, all of a sudden make them all sorts of nonconforming because of the large lot or the minimum lot size of that entire neighborhood. We, we should do it through ordinance. I think we're saying the same thing. That's what we should do. And if we want to tighten up those ordinances, those ordinances will apply immediately to all lots. And we can protect trees. We can protect water. And, you know, let's, let's be real. I mean, there's not significant water resources in Norman Ridge. There isn't significant steep slopes in Norman Ridge. There's, they don't want smaller lots. I get it. Don't sell your lot. This is, zoning is not the right tool for this. I completely agree with that. That's why I think we should have one zoning district and look at our ordinances and fix those and tighten those up as we, as we need to, to meet the needs and the, the goals of the community. So I, frankly, I think we actually agree way more than it sounds like up here.
Councilmember Lohman, and then let's, let's try to get to a consensus here and at least move this forward because we, I mean, there are good arguments on, on every side and I appreciate the conversation. But as I said, it's been a year and six months now, or four months, whatever it's been. And we continue to talk about this.
Well, Mayor, let's start off with what you said. Because I think you, you, you were trying to get to consensus there with maybe trying to do 1A. But what I'm, what I'm hearing is, and I, I don't disagree with Councilmember De La Sondro, I don't think that that solves the problem, you know, as, as how she put it forward. And that group was here. And I do remember them being here. And so I'm not unsympathetic to that. So, and I guess my thing is I just don't really want to see it mess with this RS1. But, you know, if there's a way we could, could come up with a solution for that, that neighborhood that she represents, you know, I'm certainly open to that, to doing something with that, you know? And I don't know if that means we need to even do anything with this. Maybe we just leave this alone and we try to do something else that would, would be more focused on that. Because that is, again, that's even a more narrow group of people. But, so, I don't know. I mean, certainly I'm willing to have a conversation about 1B if, if, if that would, would help to get that situation resolved. And I'm happy with the, with the 1A because it doesn't have much change in it. But, but I, I'm wanting to help move this to, to conclusion. But I don't want to railroad my, my colleague here. I think she's got a good point. You know, we, we talked about when that group was here that we try to solve that. This doesn't do that, the 1A. So I'm, I'm open to, we get that done, Mayor.
So, Mr. Johnson, I think you had a slide in there that, I mean, we, we can choose one of our six options here. Or if, if we can't come to a consensus, I think I saw something that the planning would consider this to be closed and, and things would not change. I mean, is that correct?
Mayor, if the, if a consensus is not reached on one of the six options that we're presenting it to you, you could either effectively deem the study complete would be one option, or you could give us additional direction to come back with something.
Got it.
The one thing I'd say, and one of the reasons that we are supportive of moving forward with something is we do think that good work has taken place here, you know, adding two family dwellings, eliminating some prevailing setback. That's positive for the environment from our perspective because it doesn't require these very long driveways and some other things. So we think good work is done. And that's why we would like to see a option move forward.
I, I, I don't disagree with you on that, that I would like to see us move forward. But if, if we get to a point where we just can't come to consensus here, I'm not sure where else we go. So, we, I've heard from a, a couple of folks feeling toward 1A. I mean, I'm looking for nodding heads to see if we have at least a consensus moving on 1A. Councilmember Carter, you want to weigh in more than a nod?
Yeah. Honestly, there were so many ideas thrown around up here. I just feel super confused and I feel like I can't even make a decision at this point. If I'm being really honest, like, it's like go all R1, go, I mean, like, in big picture, like, small, like, I just am like, I don't even know what we're talking about at this point, like what this council truly is trying to accomplish here, honestly, like...
Thirty seconds, Councilmember De La Sondro.
No, this is just, this is just for me to give, to give the clarity, I think, that Councilmember Carter is seeking. So I, I'm fine, like, yes, I, I would support. So I'm nodding my head to you, Mr. Mayor, that I would support you guys giving direction to 1A because I am a big fan of something is better than nothing. My biggest concern is that none of the As required our planning department to do that enhanced environmental standards work. And I want that work done. And I want it done fast because we're up against time. We're up against literally time. So that's, the whole reason I was supporting one of the Bs was because it required the team to go do that enhanced environmental standards work now, which, which is, it, it, it could, to, to Councilmember Nelson's point, that enhanced environmental standards work then could be expanded all over the place, but it, it would at least get done more quickly. If it doesn't get done via this, who knows when we're going to put it on the council's priority list? Maybe we won't get to it till 2028. I don't know. Like, and so that was the reason for my sense of urgency on that. I'm fine with 1A if, in, to, to, to cut this thing off, if, if you're worried about hurting my feelings, 1A is fine for me. I really, really, really want us to do those enhanced environmental standards because as Councilmember Nelson pointed out, we have one of everything for each one of them, but there's nothing looking at them in concert with, with each other to say if two or three of these things are met in a certain threshold, this is important as an ecosystem. And that's what I'm looking for. I hope that's clarification. Sorry for the, I don't know. Sorry for the mess earlier.
So, back to the original question, Council. I mean, do, do we have enough to move forward? I, I would hesitate to send it back to staff again because my goodness, they've spent, they've spent the time on this and they've got the recommendation forward. And I, and we could, and we can continue to chew on this. But I also believe Councilmember De La Sondro, if we continue to chew on this, I mean, if, if we don't get anything done, we just, we don't get anything done. So, Councilmember Nelson?
If Councilmember De La Sondro wanted to join me, I'd do 3B. It reduces the lot size. I'd actually reduce it to the same as R1 and I'd do the enhanced environmental standards. And I would go that direction because it takes off the lot size thing, which is my big hangup because I got to be honest with you, no one's going to rezone their neighborhood for environmental standards. They're going to do it to protect their lot sizes.
So, Council, we're back to the original question. Councilmember, Councilmember Nelson suggested 3B. Do I see four nodding heads for 3B?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. The direction works fine for me. I can be candid with you and tell you that the part of the big problem I have is that I don't know what enhanced environmental standards means because last time we had this conversation, I was the only one that was asking for it, as you can see in the notes that, you know, Mr. Nick put together for us. And so will we come to a shared understanding of what that is? I have no idea. So ultimately...
You just spoke passionately in favor of enhanced environmental.
I do. I, I am. I am. And so the point I'm making is simply that, that, like, we could do this and Councilmember Nelson could get his lot size and then he and I could go toe-to-toe on enhanced environmental standards and never come to consensus. So, so that, you know, that's my point, is simply like, fine either way, either way, right? You know, so feel, feel free. I, at this point, I should probably just abstain. Because I, I, I feel like I, I feel like I can, I can, nothing in here answers the questions that I currently have, which is...
And it's back to my, my point originally that it doesn't look like we're going to reach consensus on this. So, so then the question is, do we send it back to staff? Do we do nothing here? Or do we do basically the 1A, which is the least amount of impact that we could do without, you know, impacting some of the things that Mr. Johnson was talking about? Councilmember Carter?
So I'm going to go back to what I said before. I'm, kind of feel like we could move forward with 1A. But then the next conversation is what are enhanced environmental standards and what are other communities doing across the country to demonstrate that they're improving the environment through? And whether it's zoning or whatever districts, I don't know. But like...
So could we, could we agree on 1A and direct staff to answer some of these questions about enhanced environmental and whether it takes, I don't think it'll take three years. Our staff, they're better than that. But although the discussion might take...
Staff isn't the problem.
No, I know.
Weird.
The discussion may, may take three years. I mean, I, I would, I would be in favor of that if we went with 1A and then tried to clarify enhanced environmental standards and continue to work on that either through the Planning Commission or the Sustainability Commission and then ultimately back to the City Council. Councilmember Lohman?
So I think, I think Councilmember Carter is really kind of, is, I think, really framing this well. But the thing I really want to, I think the sense of urgency that Councilmember De La Sondro is talking about, I agree with her. There's a group of folks that came before us and I think they're looking for a resolution on that. And so, you know, I, I could support that if there's, you know, a little more definition on that, on that time scale when we get back to it. Because I do feel uncomfortable with sending it off into, into the Neverlands. Now, I understand by saying that, that that means it's going to have a consequence, either if we have it in planning or if we have it in sustainability, that's going to bump some of the, the stuff off of the, but yeah, but that's how I could get to supporting that.
And we, we certainly could direct both the Planning Commission and the Sustainability Commission included in their 2025 work plan. I mean, reasonably, that's the timeframe we're talking about.
I think that's all reasonably, at least I think that's a pretty reasonable thing. I mean, if, if my colleague would go along with that, I would, I could support this 1A and we'd get this done tonight or, or give direction.
Give direction.
Sounds good. Mr. Mayor, that's fine, that's fine with me. And to, to Councilmember Nelson's point, I don't, I don't have a problem if we come back with an, with a request to eliminate RS1 altogether, assuming we can get something in place that still gives us the protections we're looking for. So, we might... So we might get to that end point anyway.
So unless somebody throws something at me, I'm going to direct staff to move forward with one A, and then that we look at environmental enhanced environmental standards, and then we make that part of the Planning Commission and the Sustainability Commission's work plan for 2025, and make a part of the work plan for 2025. So it doesn't get drawn out too far, and we we head down that path and see where we end up. And again, unless I see a water bottle flying at my head, that's what I'm going to direct staff to do right now. Very good?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Appreciate it.
And a five point two, counsel, and it is nine o'clock now. So we're looking at nine o'clock, and we have a couple of of bigger items ahead of us still, including a couple of budget, three budget discussions. So, Mr. Ramler Olson is here to talk about another small thing, the South Loop development plan, the South Loop's district plan update. Good evening and welcome.
Good night. If I'm being honest, Mayor, members of the city council, yeah, the item is the a study session looking at the South Loop District Plan Update. As you probably all are aware, it was last adopted in, or it was adopted, originally adopted in 2012. This is part of the 2024 Planning Commission Work Plan. The scope of work is to just look at those or what, look to implementing priority updates. That's bolded and underlined. I'll I'll describe more what what we mean by that later in the presentation. But part of that scope of work includes not only updating some of the facts and figures, some of the numbers that are in the document, but also looking at the implementation plan, for instance, and identifying proposing new projects. But, you know, bringing those projects that are forward to be considered that are in line with current city priorities. Might be helpful to kind of look at the district plans in the context of all the planning work that usually happens. You'll see how they've, what district plan fits within the spectrum of plans on the right side. They're subservient to the com plan, but they and they provide more detail because they're more focused on us, because they're focused on a smaller area, and they can establish goals and objectives that are unique to the opportunities and challenges of that smaller area. So that's not something that's usually accomplished at the citywide level for comprehensive plans. And so it fits neatly within that, but it is subservient to the comprehensive plan. So it can't override any of the policies expressed in that document. Why the update? It's been 12 years. There's a lot that's changed. There's been a lot that's passed. There's been a lot that's been removed from consideration. Demographics have changed. The real estate market has shifted, and that's most notable in the office sector. There's been a lot of new development in South Loop, so it's good to probably take a take stock of that and include that within the plan and see how that might change our vision for, well, not our vision, the vision is where we want to maintain that, but how it may influence some of the other projects that we would endorse for the South Loop. There's been significant public investments. We've had new staff and resources that are integral to the to the plan that weren't there at the original time of the adoption, sustainability and creative placement, creative placemaking, sorry, a little tongue tied. We now have staff and experts in those areas, so it'd be good to get their feedback and their advice on the updates that will be considered as part of this project. And, yeah, like I mentioned, there's a lot of new plans that's been adopted since 2012. So we should also incorporate a lot of that into, or that, those documents into this update. An overview of the the original district plan is that it guided development and capital investments over decades up until 2050. So it's a pretty long time horizon. And it structured itself around four key elements or signature elements. Lindell Lane, 24th Avenue, which, you know, runs east of the Mall of America. It's a pretty big avenue. 34th and American, the plan kind of describes making that as like a neighborhood. So that's something that staff noted. And the bluff edge area, that's that's very important to the to the natural resources and recreation in the area, which are heavy draws for the residents. And for each signature or, yeah, for each signature element, it discusses them in the context of land use, transportation, sustainability. And and, yeah, it guiding the the document and the identification of those areas is the vision and goals of the original plan adopted in 2012. And I've bolded words within that vision that guide the the policies and the the projects of implementing the plan. So it's to transfer transform a dispersed suburban commercial area into a walkable urban neighborhood. So a lot of the projects are structured to advance towards that vision. And the guided land use for the area also implements that vision. This is what we have currently for the land use in the area. We have the Lindell mixed use. We have the high intensity mixed use, which is is outside the 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 airport protection zone. So that has residential mixed use possibilities, and that's primarily on the east side of the the district. On the west side, you have the Mall of America, and you have the high intensity mixed use. But, yeah, it's primarily consumed by the Mall of America. And then the south is where you see the established residential neighborhoods, which are most likely going to be remain as is. This is the zoning that is reflective of that guided land use. I have a table that's comparing the the very unique guided land uses for the area and that they have a corresponding zoning district. We can discuss those in detail if you'd like to. Schedule, this kicked off in July, so we're in the first round of study sessions in October. And we've done some research and evaluation that included looking at the document. As a team, we have a pretty extensive team that covers multiple departments and divisions. So we have a lot of expertise that we're bringing to bear to identify the issues that we think are important that for the city as they align with the city's priorities and the expertise that will, you know, get the implementations in place to be adopted by, hopefully by April, that's what we've projected for this project, April of next year. You'll see on the very right of that, that schedule, project inclusion on future capital improvement plans. The idea is we're going to be, we're hoping to identify projects that we can include on future CIPs. So that's a a big goal for for this update process. Engagement, we've 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 done one public engagement event back in August, Music in the Park. We set up a booth, and we had residents or just anyone attending come up and talk to us and ask us what they think about the South Loop and engage them on the development that's happening and what are, you know, we're hoping to get out of this project. And we got some good feedback. It was, I think it was about eight people, but, you know, they were mostly into the music. I can't fault them. But nonetheless, we had some good conversations, so we really appreciated that. And then we have a Let's Talk Bloomington page where we've been getting feedback. You should see that in one of the exhibits, Exhibit Nine, that we've been getting emails concerning this project and the South Loop. We've been communicating with key stakeholders in the South Loop area, so just sending out emails and keeping them abreast of this project and letting them know that we're available if they have any questions or comments. And then we've had a lot of meetings over the past month. We had Creative Placemaking on October 7th, or October 2nd, sorry, and Planning Commission. We've had we had Sustainability and Port Authority in the same evening. That was that was an interesting, I've never done that before, so. That's very new, but it was quite a marathon. I I survived it. I should get a T-shirt. We will have a Parks Commission meeting in December as well, and that's will also correspond with the second round of study session meetings. And, you know, through these talks and our our research and evaluation of the document as it currently is, staff has developed a set of priority areas in which we want to evaluate the issues that have been identified and sift through which ones will have the most positive impact. And so the priority areas that staff has identified or the project team has is updating the parks and open space framework. That's already in the plan, but it has, it's, that's has shifted with the adoption of the 2021 master plan from parks. There's transportation updates that we need to look at incorporating and getting that brought up to date within this this update effort. We want to clarify development goals and guidance for the area that might include looking at land use and zoning. So we'll be seeing if that's appropriate for this effort. Another priority area is streets, gates, plazas, and other public spaces. We want to just reevaluate that to see with how successful that's been implemented since 2012. There's some examples of of open spaces in public places that are they actually operating with, you know, the intent that was expressed back in 2012? So we want to evaluate that. And then sustainability updates. Granted, we didn't have sustainability staff back in 2012. We have them now, so let's make use of that and make sure that we're incorporating achievable sustainability goals. So we're going to be working in concert with sustainability staff to make sure that we can get their feedback on how the document is and to make most impactful updates to it. And we do, and as I mentioned before, we did hold a study session in front of Planning Commission back on the 10th. As you'll see in some of those bullet points, they observed that walkability has, you know, since 2012 has been lacking, or that's their, you know, that's their observation. You know, there's large blocks, there's few destinations, there's major arterials that present barriers to accessing other destinations within the South Loop. So that's something that they noted. They seem pretty adamant that ground ground level retail is an important feature that's missing from some portions of South Loop. Obviously, there's a ton on the west side in the Mall of America, but it's pretty, it's pretty absent on on the east side, or the absence is notable. And they thought, or based on staff's recollection of that discussion, that, you know, ground or those types of uses activate the streetscape, and that's important for the walkability and for the quality of life in South Loop. And they thought it best to really run on the uniqueness of South Loop and leverage that to attract development and visitors. So you have the bluffs. You have this unique community in this part of Bloomington and this part of the metro, trying to work with that in order to raise its profile so that it attracts more residents and visitors and development, for that matter. So questions for you that staff had developed are are the following. Are there any priority priority areas missing from staff's list? If so, what should be added? I should note that if you if you add another priority, that is, that that will add to the work that we we have to do, and that's appropriate maybe for this update effort. But I just wanted to let you know that adding another priority area will will, you know, have a commensurate amount of work to to be done. And perhaps the priority areas we've developed are appropriate enough, but that's for you to decide. Should any priority areas be removed from consideration? Is there, you know, just noting staff's resources and what we're able to bring? If if you'd rather us focus on a certain amount of areas, please let us know. Are there any changes to or investments in the South Loop that have occurred which you feel are inconsistent with the plan? And why do you feel that way? We really appreciate that. That'll give us some direction about how to maybe structure some of the updates that would be adopted next April or adopted next year as part of this update. And given housing needs and competing priorities, there's a lot of them, what is your patience for implementing the plan as written versus responding to market demands or, you know, shifting demands over time? So that's something for you all to consider. And Mayor, members of the city council, take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, and it's, thanks for making me feel old because I was on the council when the first plan came about and.
You're welcome.
In 2012. But I I appreciate it, and I appreciate, obviously, the need for the update and and the need to to look at this because so much has changed, just in general, and, I mean, in the world in general, but certainly over there and and different things going on. I've got a list of things that I'd be happy to go through just to get the conversation started. And if anybody wanted to jump in, they certainly could. And they kind of answer some of your questions, but they basically are kind of my thoughts as I I've been looking at this for a while. I I think one of the strengths over there is the creative placemaking, and it always has been. And so I think that needs to continue and should continue. And trying to figure out ways to, there are there are so many different pieces of the creative placemaking world over there. To develop a consistent thread, I think, would be helpful, whether it's in that area in particular or or across the city. I mean, the one that jumps to mind is is with the bird. You know, do we do we make other bird statues across the city within, you know, that kind of thing? Do we do we find a creative thread that we can weave and bring Bloomington together in that way? I think we need to do a better job to find ways to interconnect the businesses over there. We got a lot of bodies over there now, and and an increasing number of bodies that work over there. How do we make them part of the neighborhood? And how do we how do we make it more than just a place where they drive to in the morning and then go home from in the afternoon? And and what can we do? I don't know, to encourage residency over there, to encourage people to hang out, to do more, and not necessarily go over to the Mall of America and do more, but to hang out in their area, in that area. I also think we need to do a better job of utilizing a couple of things, the public spaces that are over there, and in connection to that, the LRT. What we need to think about ways that, LRT stops are a natural place for 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 things, for businesses, for residents, for, you know, a brewery, I mean, that kind of thing. It's a it's a natural spot for people to get off the train to be able to do something, and we've got to look for a better way to do that. And then I think we've got open spaces there, but they're kind of part of the development as it has been developed, and we certainly have the River Valley. What we don't have over there is a Bloomington City Park, you know, a pickleball court over there, a, you know, something to, for both, again, the the businesses and the residents. We have a growing number of people living over there now, too, who I'm sure, I I know they enjoy the open space and the green space and the grass, but are there ways to get them engaged in that way as well? So I think to incorporate and incorporate a city park. So I just went through, I mean, that includes creative placemaking, parks, planning, I guess, through the LRT and and our business development folks and all of that. And then I also have written down here, put a dog park over there somewhere. For God's sake, put a dog park over there. And it's been something we've talked about for years, and I think nothing brings a community better than a dog park, brings a community together. So those are just my ramblings and thoughts and things that I've come up with. We'll work our way right down. Carter, Muah, and then De La Sondra, and anybody else in between.
Councilmember Carter? Thank you, Mayor. Well, I absolutely agree on the parks comment. I think just last week responded to a woman who works at Kennedy and was working with a student. And his feedback for us was that we don't have any parks in South Loop where he lives in one of the apartments. And so she sent us an email and let us know that. And come to find out, like, yeah, there really are no parks or playgrounds. And so, so I agree with that. And then I agree with everything said. And then the only other thing I would add is just, I mean, obviously, we have this big economic development study happening. And so I know that will be citywide, but obviously, this is a major area for development for us. And so how does that kind of interweave with this update for this plan?
Councilmember Muah?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to hit the nail on the head again with the parks piece because I did respond, and I had a considerable conversation with that particular resident who emailed about the not having parks in the South Loop. And everyone knows I have a young family, and that is a focus for me. And not having a walkable park, specifically walkable, is very important to me. And I think we could really challenge ourselves to think about an urban park. That is the purpose of the South Loop. Yes, we'd love to have trees, but if we can do something with an urban park that has a different feel, like, that matches the South Loop, I would love to see that. The second piece really falls with the business, small business support. I'm particularly disappointed that Oxendales moved in, and then in a month, they were gone. And I went there literally a week and a half after they were open, and I talked to all the employees, and they said, it's been dead. I asked, was there any marketing? Was there anything done to to let the? I asked, was there any marketing, was there anything done to, to let the neighborhood know that we're open and we're, we're ready to do this? And it didn't sound like anything was done. So what can we do as a city to support? If we're going to work to include more walkable businesses in that area, what can we do to provide the support services so that they can be successful? So that they don't just open up shop, no one shows up and then they close. So that's something that as we go through this development, I really want to make sure we focus on is let's build the space, but then support the people who will be there.
Councilmember Alessandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, so parks are, parks and playgrounds. Plus one for that, absolutely. I also heard from that resident, I think we all did, and I agree wholeheartedly. You know, I did, I have taken a swing on the swing that's in Bloomington Central Station, but that's not a playground, right? So I get it. It is fun though, and you should do it. I, I also agree that, you know, tube stops, right? I think of anytime I think of, of London and my time over there. The best thing people do is they get quite happy and then jump in the tube and go home, right? So like, let's get that done. Absolutely. There's this, I don't mean to imply that this is an, an added priority, but maybe a specific, specific concept to consider as part of one of these other priorities, which is I think we should have a point of view about what we, what, what should happen with the farm. And what I mean by that is that there are certain kinds of things that we would be comfortable seeing if those people finally sold that. Certain things that we wouldn't, certain things we would like to have as conditions or sale because it meets with both the South Loop's economic position, but also the sustainability position. So I, I just, I, we, we kind of don't ever talk about it, but it's such a significant portion of that bluff interface between the river and, and the South Loop area. And I think it's worth a consideration. I don't know what we can do, and I don't mean to imply, maybe we buy it. I don't know, like whatever, like we could talk about anything. But, but I think it needs to be a part of the consideration as we're thinking about this. And then the, I, I wanted to just put a plus one beside the sustainability teams. I love the idea and I even said it way back when we were first talking about this, when I first got on council. The idea of, of some kind of a self-contained energy system in the South Loop. I love the idea and I, I, you know, a Herc-like thing, probably not worth it, but geothermal or solar or something else like that that really makes it look like a 21st century urban scape. So those are, those are all the things that were kind of in here that I just wanted to throw out. The only other thing that I would put in here is that, and maybe this is kind of to councilmember Mua's point. And, and something you'll hear me talk about as we go into priorities for next year. And maybe with the community development team as a whole, is we don't have anybody building the suit around here very well. Now, we had, we had a Hatch Bloomington program that showed up and I think five or six, I can't quite remember, but I was a judge for one of the five, six, 10, maybe of the original projects were all restaurants. And we have nobody willing to build the suit for restaurants around here. And then we expect the restaurant owner, a small guy trying to start up, to go through what is highly onerous, right? Our inspection requirements on grease traps and, and, you know, smell ordinance and exhaust systems and, you know, indoor garbage and, you know, all these things, right? Get, get some of these developers to build the suit. And, and, and then we, you literally could knock them down as fast as you stood them up with the number of people who want to build restaurants in this city. So things of that nature that we can consider as a, as a priority, and that's kind of in line with what you're talking about, councilmember Mua. I think would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. And councilmember Alessandro's point, and I forgot to mention it, a district energy plan for that area, I think would be a no brainer. So councilmember Rivas and councilmember Lohman.
Just a quick comment, parks. I agree with almost everybody. A park in there would be awesome. And then the other thing is just let the market dictate what you guys do out there rather than sticking to the plan. I guess, like everybody's saying, the market has changed and people want to build different things. I, I think it would be the best thing for the city to pursue that rather than sticking to something that was planned years ago. But that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Councilmember Lohman.
I'll just answer your question. You can leave the staff priority up here too. But given the housing needs portion with the market demands, I think that, I think we've got to be attuned to the, the market. And I really think we've got to, you know, listen to what the market is kind of saying and trying to figure out how can we add to that? Cause when we do that, I think we really can kind of leverage what's already taking place there. And then kind of help with our priorities, kind of go where the, where the, where the puck is, as you, as you might say. If I go back to this other question here, are there any changes to the investment in the South Loop that occurred which you feel are inconsistent with the plan? I don't know. I mean, I think it's, it's, it's tough, you know, once you, we, once you kind of make those plans and you put the money in there, sometimes the market has changed. So I think it's just, it's hard to kind of, it's hard to kind of time those things sometimes. So you just got to kind of go with what you're doing there. Looking at the staff priorities that you have on the list here, let me get to them again here. So I guess the, the one thing that I keep hearing from my colleagues up here is just this idea of trying to break down barriers and, and constraints that either developers have or people have from trying to utilize the, utilize the space. And I don't know, I, I think the, you know, the vision's kind of there, but the, the question that I kind of ask myself, I look at the North Loop and that's where I kind of work. And I, I think about how those, you know, how the buildings, you know, they really have kind of taken advantage of kind of the smaller buildings. Those are being redeveloped and those spaces are activated. So when you leave work, you can kind of go out there and have these experiences. They've got food there, they've got clothing. Places where people are living. And so you just, I mean, when you leave work, it's activated. And I think, you know, I think about that in terms of kind of, you know, I, I look at that north, or look at that South Loop area. And it's kind of in a, in a sense, a showcase for what Bloomington is, you know, we go back a generation or two. You know, Vikings and North Stars, it was a place that where people were gathering. And I guess the question that I ask myself today is how do we reinvent the, you know, like the Bloomington Strip? You know, how do we create that place, you know, where people want to be, where young people want to be at and be a part of? I go to conferences all the way across the, you know, across the country. And that's one of the things I kind of see in some of those spaces where it's just activated. And I just think that we're, we're there, we've got the, you know, we've got the density there, we've got a lot of the, the tools. We just haven't been able to weave it together and make it all one thing. And the last thing I'll say, I know we didn't get the World's Fair. But man, I really liked that park, you know, that park really brought everything together. Cause it, it really highlighted the idea of gathering and bringing folks together. Talked about our sustainability, how we're international city. I think we should just go ahead and do that. I think that's what we should try to do something of that level of scale in that space. And that's it. I'll shut up, Mayor. I know. I'm trying to get to the rest of our thing here.
Councilmember Nelson, you want to end on this or? Good enough? Good enough? Is that helpful?
Mayor, members of the city council, yeah, I think that's, that's helpful. Thank you for your feedback. Really appreciate it. Again, we'll be coming back in front of you specifically sometime in January, new year, 2025, scary, right? And we'll be holding these other study sessions in December, meeting with parks. We're also, we're in talks to have another, like a check-in meeting with, with sustainability and the Port Authority as well. So we, we still have some work to do and we'll hopefully have some drafts of, or we, we plan to have drafts of these updates to bring to you to, as models of, you know, what we're thinking about incorporating into this update effort. So, yeah, we'll see you then. And yeah, thank you for your feedback. Really appreciate it.
Good. Thank you. Next on our agenda, item 5.3, discussion of our proposed tenure capital improvement plan. Lori Economy Shuler, back with us once again.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At this time of night, I'm going to try to be brief because I'd like to listen to some of the budget stuff. In our CIP, we do go through our mission and investing in our priorities as part of our process. This evening, we're going to go through some of the highlights for 2024, some of the pieces in our executive summary and some of the items for 2025 and 26. As part of our normal process, when we talk about our CIP, this is a planning tool. It is not an authorization to spend tool, it's a planning tool. All the projects that we have and updated through 2025 are 50,000 and greater. In our executive summary, we've included projects that are a million dollars and above. This tool does not guarantee the project moves forward unless all the funding sources and council approval or city manager approval is in place. And then we would find, follow the normal procurement rules to obtain the, the projects. This evening, the draft is before the council. The CIP draft was documented and the link to it was sent out to the council about 10 days ago so that you had opportunity to review it. The planning commission has the document before them next Thursday. And then it would be before the city council on December 16th for approval. Some of the highlights from 24. Each quarter, we update the project dashboard and it is sent out through Bloomington this week. And it is also posted on the finance website for the CIP. One of the updates that we saw this summer was the update to the mural. And we also saw on the doors change and some of the sidewalk improvements along the entries to the Civic Plaza. We also had groundbreaking for both Treppa and Bryant Park. And the Round Reservoir finished its public improvements there. And then there's surface transportation. Which areas they were. I know, I know. Meadowview is the first one. And then it's Emerson Walkway for the next one. Emerson Bump Out for the third one and Bryant Avenue Walkway sidewalks there for the fourth one. In the executive summary, the tenure plan includes $850 million worth of projects in all the different categories. The largest being the city facility. And as you noted earlier this evening, our first project for the sales tax is underway for big, a good portion of what's coming for in the two-year summary on this one here is the Community Health Wellness Center. The Fleet Garage, Fire Station, those type of things are in that facility area plus other smaller projects. Here are some of the funding sources. As you see the big blue bar in the middle there, that is 2025, the hundred million dollar for sales taxes for the sales tax revenue bonds for the Community Health and Wellness Center. And then the Brown Police after that is where the $20 million for the natural resources on Moir Park, Central Park. Nine Mile Quarter improvements. And you see the outline of those project highlights for 2025. We have some new projects for the Civic Plaza restroom and some of the information area all being changed around a little bit. We had out there, a new project was added for the teardown of the Public Health Building. It'll be slotted in 2027 right now. City network expansion is now added in there. Update to the city access card system. Other new projects are roundabouts, street improvements, the 98th Street and 35W interchange. That's a large project. Pedestrian crossways and sewer maintenance upsizing. We've had some conversations on the sewer upsizing in the last couple council meetings, so SAC charges. And those improvements are coming in the future. Some of the major facility pieces that are coming and the sewer ones are the Fleet Garage, Community Health and Wellness. Normal payment management in each year, sanitary south, the Nine Mile Corridor, Creek Corridor piece. Fire stations, Duane Clubhouse and the sanitary sewer north. These are just some of the debt areas that we are looking at and we'll have more conversation on the Fleet Garage in the coming month. I think that's coming on December 2nd. Community Health and Wellness could be coming in the next summer and the PIR bonds are next fall. So just moving on to discussion. We'll follow the normal procurement rules. We'll engage consultants, prepare studies, all of the, the pieces. When we bring this back to the council for the 25 through 2034 plan. It usually initiates projects for 2025, 26. Last year's initiate approval for the council, it started the projects for 24, 25. So those that are coming in 25 are most likely underway already. The council for the Fleet Garage already hired and approved an architect for that. So I'll try to be very brief. Discussion, feedback, questions, I could take them today. You could send them to us. We'll be back before you on the 16th of December.
Thank you. And thank you for your brevity. Appreciate it. Councilmember Alessandro.
One general question. Is there, is there a, this harder question that I should, I intended it to be. What is the methodology that's used to determine the, the order in which CIP generally comes from a 10-year could be happening to a two-year, probably going to be asked for to happen kind of thing? What's generally the methodology that you all use there? I'm asking because for example, the Civic Plaza restroom thing, and this is, this is the first I'd heard of it. I, you know what I mean? Like I, I don't, I don't think it's bad necessarily, but I go into those and I don't have a problem with it. But like, but I don't know, I don't know, like, I don't know how it's been decided that that should be something that happens in 2025 versus if we said 2027 or 2028. That's just what I'm asking. Yeah.
Mayor and councilmember Alessandro, the bathroom upgrade has actually been, been in the CIP. But it was initially, it was all the bathrooms with upstairs and downstairs to be improved. And then, and that was several years ago, the price was in the CIP was 200. It came in at 400 and there was a lot of pushback on that, that we pushed aside bathroom improvements. And then prices, I mean, it's been like five years, so prices has increased.
Yeah, sure.
And then the thought was that we would just do toilets and sinks in that one. And now it's evolved to possibly individual toilet areas and then a common hand washing area.
Great.
So it's evolved and now because it's evolved so much, they really numbered it.
That's totally fair. I, I, so that's a great example of what I hear you telling me is that they're part of a fairly normalized process of making improvements after a 20 or 25 year lifespan for a particular amenity. And so they were put in the CIP, we knew it was coming and now we're at that point. And if we delayed it any further, it would, the cost would go up. It's, that's fine. That's a completely reasonable explanation for it. That's what I wanted to understand. So one of the things I think that would be helpful as we, if we were asked to approve this is is it possible to designate in the CIP that which is a not like a, like has been in the CIP for 10 years? And it's just rolling its way up into the top of the list versus the things that we as a priority have, have moved to the top of the list? I don't know if that's something we can do, but stuff that's like routine that we knew was coming in a 25 or 30 year clip that's just now getting to the top of the list versus the things that we've kind of added through strategic priority. Would it be possible to see that designation so that we could be a little bit more informed for our approval process in December?
Mayor and councilmember Alessandro, as you're going through the individual projects, in the first two digits of that is the year that the project came to start being in the CIP. So you might see something from 2018, you might see something from 2010.
Okay.
If it's very routine that it's annually, like PNP, it's got a 99 on it. So it's just, it's been out there for 20, 30 years for PNP to be consistent and every year.
Okay.
Mr. Brugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Alessandro. We can go back and take a look and see how many of those items there are. I, I don't think there's a whole lot bathrooms notwithstanding.
It was just one of those examples.
I was just going to say what kind of subject it is, but I, you know, we'll move on. So you, most of the items in the CIP are also tied to a funding source. And so especially with like items that are within our own facilities, it's generally our facilities fund that is paying for those projects. And so our facilities team is looking at the scheduling of these things based on need, like you said, criteria. like you said, criteria for aging and systems and whatever, and then matching up our facilities fund to time out with the CIP. So there isn't a whole lot of things languishing there just because we've got it pretty well identified. Places where we have is where we don't have a funding source identified and sometimes we just have to keep kicking them down the road until, you know, we do have a specific funding place, a funding plan in place.
Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment here just to how much I appreciate, I mean, this, this used to be a real arduous task and what you've done here is really done a great job of summarizing something that's really a very complex thing and tried to, and I just wanted to let you know how much I appreciate your effort in terms of doing that. Secondarily, I wanted to just mention the, this 10-year department summary, you know, just how much it's been kind of mapped out by, by department that just, it's, you know, we certainly can dig deeper in those things, but I think it's a clear indication in terms of, you know, if we're able to get some of these items done. I know some of them are programmed to be done, but just how much we've kind of got as an opportunity and things we could get done over that period of time and it's quite significant. I'm not sure if you want to mention anything about that at all, but.
Mayor and councilmember Lohman, the biggest cost drivers in a lot of our CIP are updating the city facilities like Dwan or fire stations or Fleet Garage. As we've had conversations before, previous councils have kicked the can and this group is faced with looking at that and moving forward with some of those.
Well, that's my final point and I, I want to bring up the bathrooms because that is a sore spot for me. Because I remember when that came up, I mean, it just, I think about how much.
February of 2020, not that I remember.
Thank you for bringing it up. Because I remember we, this council, not this council, but a different council at that point in time, really got, you know, worked up about some bathrooms and we were really going to make significant investment at that point in time. And I just think of how much was lost from then to now and it's just amazing to me to look at that, you know? We can get just a million dollars and, you know, not even, I mean, I just remember the scope of that last project and it just makes me angry that we just didn't get it done. And so I just, you know, as I look at the, this 10-year kind of thing, I just, I just commit myself to this idea of just trying to, as best I can to argue for these things. We try to get it done today rather than kicking it down the road because there's just real impacts in terms of what we can do with the capital and the things that we can do with the resources that we have today. They're going to be much more expensive in the future. And I think the staff has really done a nice job of laying those things out for us to kind of look at those things and really kind of with a clear vision, just trying to, as best we can, as responsibly as we can. I think this council has done a nice job of trying to do that, but I just, we have so much that has been kicked into our, our air of, so don't, certainly don't hear me in terms of saying that, but I just think back of what it could have been if we would have just done that, that one little project. And again, not a ton of money, but it is now. It is now.
And Mayor and council, on projects that are in the future, staff have used their best estimate of today's and inflated it to what it could be for those costs until we come up to that year or the year before to actually study what that cost is. It is still an estimate in here for those future ones.
Council, additional questions? All right, and I'm sorry, I know you set it, but when will it come back for the public hearing? 16th of December, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you much. Moving in now, council, to our three different budget discussions for this evening. We're going to start with item 5.4, 2025 budget discussion for the Park and Rec Department. I see a, an entire team coming forward and then some.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council. Yes, you do see an entire team coming forward this evening and I promise that we will be concise for you. But I think it's important, we have many business units with significant operations to have our staff talk to you this evening. So tonight we'll be presenting the details of the Parks and Recreation proposed 2025 budget. Our team is always looking for ways to improve efficiency and the service that we provide to community. With that in mind, in 2024, we completed a maintenance and operations plan for the Park Maintenance Division. We completed a food and beverage strategic plan for recreation facilities. We finished the Bryant and Treppa Park plans, both of which are under construction right now. We are working to finalize an agreement with the Three Rivers Park District for the maintenance and operations of our regional parks. We completed a feasibility study for both the Community Center and the Nine Mile Creek Projects and we're getting ready to kick off an urban forestry plan. So with that, we have a lot going on. So just a quick overview for this evening, we're going to give a quick overview of our department. We're going to review our staffing requests and we're going to review our revenue and service delivery enhancements and we're going to review our park and recreation funds. We believe that Parks and Recreation is essential to our community. We promote health and wellness and support childhood development. We contribute to the economic opportunity and strengthen our community bonds. Our infrastructure makes our cities resilient, especially during natural disasters and climate change events. And notably, 84% of U.S. adults looking for a place to live choose where they live because of high-quality parks in the area. Here are some highlights for the Parks and Recreation team for this year. The Bloomington Family Aquatic Center saw nearly 50,000 visitors. Dwan Golf Course reached over $2.2 million in gross sales. The Bloomington Ice Garden recorded a 65% increase in open skating revenue. The Bloomington Center for the Arts hosted audiences at an average of 78% capacity, the highest since 2019. These numbers demonstrate our strong impact to the community and we plan to continue this momentum going into 2025. This slide shows a high-level overview of the services that we provide to the community and our staff that performs the duties to perform our recreation programs and provide the facilities for the community. We are requesting seven staff positions this year. We have 54 full-time staff currently and 244 part-time and seasonal staff. To get into a little bit more detail about our staffing requests, first of all, I'd like to talk about the Community Health and Wellness Center Manager. This position would assist with the design and operations and hire all of the staff when needed for the Community Health and Wellness Center. This position is actually replacing the vacant Creekside Community Center Manager position. The Recreation Manager position would also be funded through a reallocation of expenses, allowing us to support expanded recreation programs without additional budget impact. We would like to request two park maintenance workers specifically to support forestry and natural resources. We would like to request an arena specialist. Beginning in September of 2025, we hope to hire an arena specialist to enhance operational coverage at the Bloomington Ice Garden. BIG is open 120 hours a week. Our goal is to have either a full-time or a regular part-time person there during all open hours. That's for the safety, security, and the maintenance of that facility. We'd like to request a full-time Assistant Center for the Arts Manager. This position would also be a reinstatement of a position that was lost during COVID. It would allow us to meet the demands of the growing programs and activities hosted at the Center for the Arts, especially with the increasing facility utilization. And we'd also like to reclassify a part-time position to a full-time Maintenance and Production Superintendent. This transition supports more efficient management of our production and maintenance needs at the Center for the Arts, enhancing service delivery at the facility. We have secured partnerships with businesses, nonprofits, and associations to offer programs, amenities, and services in the Parks and Recreation Department. Some examples of that are the Todd Pod, Soccer Shots, Toro Corporation, and the Bloomington Community Foundation. And we continue to review our fees and cost recovery as outlined in the Park System Master Plan. We're always looking for grant funding for our programs and our facilities. Notable grants received in the last year are a $300,000 grant for the playground at Bryant Park, $50,000 for the Urban Forestry Master Plan, almost $72,000 for astrower replacement, and a lifeguarding grant for training and staffing at $55,000 for each of three years. That was a lot, quick update, and now we're going to move into the General Fund with Allison.
Good evening, thank you for having us here today. I'm going to quickly go through the, through the General Fund for you. This will look familiar to you hopefully from what you've seen in your past budget presentations and you'll continue to see through all of us here today. First is showing the General Fund budget request here with increases on the right-hand side. If we go into the details of those budget changes, you can see here, oh, we have some minor increases in income. We do have some increases in salaries for our seasonal staff for additional programming and expanding that programming outside into different neighborhood areas. There's a request for $175,000 for an increase in seasonal staffing for Herbeck Fields and the shoulder seasons of our maintenance facilities. So April and the end of the year, trying to continue to provide that same service. There's $361,000 for increase in salaries for some of our existing staff that follow our schedule here for staff. The most notable piece here is the $300,000 in internal charges that are through other city funds here as their, their expenses increase, those are charged back to our, our department here. And a modest increase in materials and supplies of 50,000. And then we're also, as mentioned with the Three Rivers Park District, we will no longer be charging back park maintenance to our aquatics fund, so taking on those additional And Dave's going to talk about a potential quick service reduction.
Yes, thank you. Along with our budget, we'd like to present with you the idea of engaging the community, the council, on our service that we provide to residents through plowing sidewalks. Currently, we clear the entire city. It's 260 miles or so and it takes us anywhere from one to three days to complete this depending on the level of snow that we get. All of our other plowing operations are completed the first day, start to finish, and they're allowed to go back and do cleanup the following day. This causes a lot of confusion with the residents and that it takes us several days to get through the routes. If there's another event, we sometimes have to go back to day one and start working through our priorities all over again. Other quality concerns that we hear from the public are, besides the time it takes us to get to everything the way we're resourced, we don't scrape down to the bare pavement, we don't use ice control, we don't do as good a job as, as they would like. So, and in fact, by the time we get to a lot of these third priority areas that are really low-volume residential roads, they're already done as well as the industrial areas. If we took a, a look at decreasing this, we could spend more time working on parks and get our rinks open sooner and things like that. So some of the service level adjustments we're talking about, first of all, the city's had a, a practice of doing sidewalks for decades. I've worked here for 30 years, I grew up in town, so in the 70s, I remember plows going down the street, plowing the sidewalks. So we've done that even though we have an ordinance in place that requires residents and property owners to do it within 12 hours. So we've crafted a couple of scenarios that would look at reductions in service. So one on, on sort of the, the low end of reduction would be to eliminate roughly 27% of sidewalks and that would be the low-volume residential streets and industrial areas. And that would, that would allow us to finish in one to two days, the way we're staffed and resourced now. The higher level reduction would be a reduction of 67% and that would just have us focus on properties that are sidewalks adjacent to city properties or other special service districts like South Loop or, or Lyndale. We have a complete engagement plan ready to go. We'd like to begin engaging the community through Let's Talk Bloomington and the briefing, in-person events, and, and just ask the question, how do you feel about sidewalk plowing in Bloomington? How do you feel about residents taking care of it yourself? What is your experience out there now and what you like it to be? The third option would be to add equipment and staff to, to get it back to doing it in, in one day.
Councilmember Carter, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Do you want to wait for questions at the end or can I just ask?
Yeah, I don't know what the.
Yeah, go ahead.
When you are developing that survey, do you feel like it's going to be easy to clarify for people kind of between the different sidewalks? So I imagine if I'm responding to that kind of survey, I would personally be like, oh yeah, no, don't do the residential areas, but I'd still want like the main streets done. So you'll, we'll be able to distinguish for people.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll have maps and everything for people to understand and certainly the priority areas that we worked through already.
Yep, okay, awesome, thank you.
Any other questions? So, all right, with that, I'm going to move on to the special.
Pardon me, pardon me, I apologize, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Yeah, do you have a savings expectation with each of those scenarios that you're, you're currently estimating right now?
Yeah, we do. If I didn't cover that adequately, so the, the, the modest reduction would be, in, in terms of staff hours, it'd be roughly 620 staff hours put back into maintaining parks. And then the higher would be 1,250. And that's based on five-year averages, we know that, we didn't plow any sidewalks last year, so we took five-year averages.
Thank you.
And then, and the equipment is quite expensive too.
Councilmember Rivas and then councilmember Mua, and looking at our time, folks, we'd like to get out of here by 11:00, so councilmember Rivas.
Just a quick question, do the parks get as much usage as the streets? I mean, you're planning on taking care of the parks, right, to maintain the parks during the winter. So do they get used as much as some of the streets that you will stop plowing?
Do the park trails get used? Yeah.
As much usage as, you know, I mean, for instance, let's say you plow my sidewalk, I will have an issue if I go, well, how many people go to the park as compared to how much usage the sidewalk gets where I leave.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, has that been taken into consideration?
Mayor, councilmember Rivas, we don't know exactly how much each sidewalk gets used. The work that we would be doing in parks would, would be above and beyond plowing them. We would do tree work, we could do natural resources work, we could get our ice rinks open sooner than we do now. That would be a great way to start using the extra staff time. Does that help answer your question?
Somewhat. I, my only concern is because during the winter, I see lots of kids walking by my house heading to the school. And, you know, it gets plowed partially by me and partially by the city because I do, when I get up in the morning, I do a quick cleanup just to be able to get out. And then the city goes later in the day, but, I mean, the trafficking there is a lot. So I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, I wouldn't mind doing it myself, but then it would take me until I come home from work, you know, 12, 14 hours later, it would be all nasty there through the day unless the city finds people for not doing it on a timely manner. So.
Mr. Brugge.
That's it, that's it. I mean, I don't want to make this a, a big conversation.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Rivas, appreciate the question. I think two things to consider, one, with parks, we do get active use of the parks within the winter. And so it is important for us to plow out the trails and the parking lots in the parks so that people can safely enjoy them. Part of the issue that we're talking about with the sidewalks is, to Mr. Hanson's point, is that we have an ordinance in place that we've had in place for a long time, that residential properties that have a sidewalk in front of them, it's their obligation, right? And so we've been, this is a case where we have been frankly gold-plating our services, if you're not familiar with that term. That means we're delivering service at a higher level than I think could reasonably be expected, right? So I would say that for parks, yes, we absolutely should continue to plow them and make sure they're maintained with a priority. And the issue here is questioning the level of service for sidewalks.
Councilmember Mua and then councilmember Nelson, councilmember Mua.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make this quick. The staff hours calculation, does that include the other work that we do in the spring to clean up? the other work that we do in the spring to clean up when we mess up people's yards? Because I know a resident called me and there's like, you guys messed up my yard, and we had to send people out there. Does that include that?
Mayor, Councilmember Mua, it does not include the saw damage repair that we do. This is simply for plowing. Great question. Thank you for asking that.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just to clarify, this is not an elimination of sidewalk plumbing. This is a reduction. So those areas where there's probably a likelihood of high traffic in school areas, those would still be a priority and as they have been and would still be handled by city staff. Is that accurate?
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, any of those scenarios could be accurate. We portray or put out two sort of extreme examples, and it could very well end up somewhere in the middle based on everybody's feedback and everything, yeah.
Onward to forestry.
Onward. Okay, we're going to now talk about the Park and Rec Special Revenue Fund. And previously, this fund had housed all of our lottery-in-lie funding that we received through the Met Council with our regional parks. And with the pending agreement with Three Rivers Park Districts, those would be removed, and this fund will solely take care of our forestry funding. So a couple of the things here that we are looking at as far as the details are the decrease in revenue from the lottery-in-lie funding of 60,000. We are proposing a transfer of Strategic Priorities Fund for forestry expenses of $165,000 in lieu of raising property taxes instead for this fund. We have a decrease in salaries, an increase in interest, and all of these are really associated with that Three Rivers Park District agreement, and we look at a decrease of about $10,000 here. Here's a long-term model. You can see the $165,000 transferred in there in blue as that is pending. Your approval? Councilmember...
Regarding this, I know that you all are embarking on a forestry study. Do you, I assume that this special revenue fund is not accurate past 2025 if you consider the fact that you're probably going to come and ask for a lot more money. Is that fair?
Councilmember DeLisandro, I would say that is fair.
Okay, thanks.
And now we're going to move on to David Benson to our aquatics fund.
Good evening, Mayor, Manager, and Council. David Benson, your aquatic facility manager. Tonight, we're going to be dipping our toes into the 2025 request for the aquatics fund. As you can see, the water is just fine. Both our overall revenue and expenditures have decreased, primarily reflecting the Three Rivers Park District assuming operations of Bush Lake Beach, which has allowed us to reduce the related expenses. This transition positions us to allocate our resources more effectively while continuing to meet our community's needs. This slide provides a detailed breakdown of the decrease in both revenue and expenditure. It's important to note that the tax levy previously supported the beach fund. With its removal, we're seeing the reduction of $165,000. This results in an increase in revenue, less expenditure, and overall, a decrease in the budget for 2025. This slide presents a short-term model of our working capital balance. The green highlights indicate a healthy working capital position, especially with the anticipated tax levy increase coming in 2026. In the long run, working capital balance remains healthy and sustainable with the continued support of the levy. We have some enhancements coming in 2025. We will be revamping the Turtle Reef Concession Stand with some new menu items, equipment, and increased hours. We also have expanded our popular weekday tot time to allow more ages and higher ratios for families. Thank you for your time. Next up is the ice garden.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I might add, if any cool puns like David, but we do have a cool facility at the Bloomington Ice Garden. 2025 is probably one of the most challenging budgets I'll ever present to the city council, primarily because we'll be closed for six months for our modernization project. So looking at the budget for 2025, you'll see a pretty significant reduction in revenues, about 40%. Also, about a 14% decrease in expenditures, the elimination of part-time staff during that closure, scaling back as much as we can, but we still need to operate for three months at the beginning of the year and three months at the end of the year and get the facility back open. Looking at kind of a more detailed breakdown, you'll see a slight increase in the property tax levy to help offset some of those losses in revenue, shifting around of salaries due to the partial closure or the six-month closure, reduction in the part-time staffing. Also, the request, as Ann mentioned earlier, of an additional FTE starting in September when we reopen with the goal of having a full-time, regular, part-time person in the building every hour that we're open. Other items in here, decreases in utilities, obviously being closed six months will significantly decrease our utilities for that period of time, and hopefully with the renovations and modernization, we'll see some long-term reductions to those utility costs. To forecast those, it'd be virtually impossible at this point, but anticipating some long-term savings there. Also, just some other reductions due to being closed for, again, a portion of the year. You'll see some other increases, internal service fees, some capital outlay and debt service as well. The long-term model does take a pretty substantial hit in 2025, again, due to a six-month closure, but forecasting out with a slight increase in the tax levy, it does recover and look positive 2028 and beyond. Over the last couple of years, also, as Ann has mentioned, we've seen an increase in our ice rental and ice utilization. We've seen a lot of new programs being added, Adult Coffee Club. We added a New Year's Eve party last year that was hugely successful, some additional program enhancements. We're looking at some concession changes as well with our food and beverage strategic plan, and then looking at other options long-term to maximize our revenues in the summer times by reducing discounted summer ice in the months, summer months that used to be begging people to come to the rink and rent ice, and now we're knocking them away with sticks because it's so busy and the demand is so high. So why continue to discount that fee? With that, any questions? Otherwise, I will pass it on to Peter.
Councilmember Carter has a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry. Really quick. So for the positions that will be reduced during the closure, are those positions like kind of going away? I guess I won't ask a question. I'll just make a comment. I would hope that if there's potential to have those people who are impacted work in other parts of the city, like helping with ball fields or whatever, you know, thinking about the CIP conversation earlier, if we have to rehire later, it's going to be more expensive to hire people back in, more than likely. So plus, obviously, we want to, you know, if we have good people on staff, we want to keep good people on staff. So more of a comment.
Yeah. Mayor and councilmember Carter, we are notifying all of our limited, regular, part-time staff that they will be furloughed effective March, but we will be passing along other seasonal employment opportunities to them for them to pursue if it fits their skill set and their interests and their hours, with the hope of retaining some of those really good staff. It's just a lot cleaner to go that route, and some are planning to take some time off, and some will hopefully be back working for other areas of the organization. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. Peter Curver is the golf course manager. I guess I'll start with the headline. Things are very good at Dwan going on, I guess this is seven years now where we've had record revenue growth. Tomorrow, if anybody's paying attention, it's going to be 80 degrees, and we're going to do 200 rounds at the end of October. So it's really, really, we're in a really good shape. So I might should be pretty brief here. The budget request for 2025, some of the things to highlight here is the last year of any kind of levy support from the city for the golf operations. And there's a slight increase in fees in that, which will offset some of the things with expenses. And if I go into the next slide, you'll see some increases in my expense part for materials and labor. Oops. Yep, here we go. So this slide breaks this down. As you see, the 105,000 was the levy subsidy, which is going to go away. The big thing for me, for you, may not be so big, is the increase of $360,000 there in request for materials. One is $30,000 for replacement of ash trees. We took down several last year. We're going to probably take down the remainder of them this year, which all told will be about 120-plus ash trees. So I'm requesting $30,000 for replacement, and then $330,000 is for the study for the golf course, new clubhouse potentially, as well as golf course improvements. That will come out of charter bond funds, which by understanding will be put back in in 2026, so it'll have no impact on the long-term balance. Okay, so this slide is the long-term and short-term capital balance, and as you can see, is very healthy. 2024, not quite done yet, but projection is we're going to be in really good shape. And I want to emphasize that it does not require any tax levy subsidy, and going forward for as long as we can see, we should be in really good shape. Finally, is enhancements here at the golf course, along with the other facilities. We're looking at our food and beverage as a revenue source to increase that. And then I'm going to jump to the bottom slide there. It says 42-page golf course, physical asset improvement. And this was a study I did with my staff last year. We put together pictures, different things, all these little things on the golf course that said, we just got to fix this. Small little projects, big projects, and all these were absorbed into what we call regular operating, regular staff. We've already kicked off about probably 15 or 20 of them, but some of these things are, they're not glamorous, cart path repair, landscaping repair, taking down things, more flowers. We always hear about flowers where we enhance and trade flower gardens for different flower gardens. So those are things. And also course branding. We've made a big effort here in the last couple of years to kind of brand Dwan, so that's going to go forward in the coming years. So that's it. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Ian?
Good evening, all. Happy to discuss the Center for the Arts budget. So before I dive into these slides here, I did just want to provide this information that in 2025, Parks and Recreation will be hiring a consultant to provide a facility operations analysis for BCA. We want to take a top-to-bottom look and evaluate how things are running here. The overall goal is to modernize the operating business model that we're working under, meeting current need, projected future need, but also to bring BCA into further alignment with this council's strategic planning priorities, which I know is a big one. So that will be ongoing in 2025 as well. On the slide here, we can see the budget request. I do just want to highlight two important ones, that the adjustment in the property tax levy, and then, as Ann mentioned previously, the change to salaries and benefits. BCA is anticipating a $500,000 increase in the property tax levy. This was actually forecast in previous 10-year budget models, so this is not new to this year. And as well as within this, the two position requests, the reinstatement of the assistant manager position and the increase to our full-time maintenance and production superintendent. BCA is a facility that's open 89 hours a week and currently has one full-time position assigned to it. It does an amazing amount of volume between arts partners, resident arts organizations, but also, I mean, dozens of city civic engagement programs throughout the week and year. And so it's a very dynamic facility. It's just missing staffing at this point, so we'd like to fix that problem. So as we can see here, the increase to the tax levy does provide us a sustainable short-term model while this facility operations analysis proceeds. It's also in support of just keeping the doors open, our ongoing capital improvement projects that we have to a now 20-year-old facility, and then, of course, the two position requests that have been identified as vital to facility operation. So with increased staffing support, we do intend to have city-run education programs in the classrooms and studios within BCA. We do intend to continue service to the city civic engagement programs and those strategic planning priorities. We would like to continue ongoing support of our arts partnerships as their audiences continue to increase year-over-year post-COVID. And with Creekside also closing, we are in line to absorb a limited amount of their programming as well as multiple rental patrons of theirs in 2025. And I believe I am last, so that moves us to the discussion slide for me or for anybody else here. Thank you for your time.
Councilmember Loman and Councilmember DeLisandro. Councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor. So I don't know if this is a question really for you, but, you know, I know we had that facilities conversation where we talked about how, you know, and I saw a little notation further back where we're adding these positions for that, but one of the things I'm kind of having a difficult time trying to grasp is kind of where we're at with that overall facilities plan. And I know that you don't necessarily need to do that here in the budget, but I'm just curious in terms of where we're at in that whole, that overall process of getting to where we needed to be with that facilities plan.
Mr. Fabregas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Loman, we are, so what Councilmember Loman is referencing is the facilities service assessment that we did several years ago, and that identified optimal service levels that we wanted to achieve within our various buildings based on their function, and identified that we are quite a few staff short of what it would take to actually deliver service at those levels. And so our plan has been, over time, to try to periodically add staff to get to that level. My recollection is that we have one request for next year on the facilities staffing side. Doesn't necessarily keep us on pace, but it's on the balance of everything else. So I'd say that with all the competing interests that we have, that's what we're trying to balance here. To Ian's point, within the art center, we frankly just need to have somebody who can provide a level of service that we're just not providing right now because of the amount of activity there. And I think Ian was being unreasonably humble when he was referring to one employee for 89 hours that the facility is open. I don't think it's reasonable for the one employee to have to be, that's him right there, to have to be on call at all times to resolve all problems. It's just not sustainable.
Well, and I appreciate that. That's part of why I wasn't, I was going to ask about that anyways, but then that really kind of teed that up. But I mean, so I guess there's some, it's like we've done that feasibility study, and what I'm struggling with, you know, and I know this is, I'm looking at the time here, so try to be careful here, but the thing I'm struggling with is, okay, we put that in place, we paid for that study, and now we're trying to do it, but I have no visibility to kind of see where we're at with that. And then the other question I asked, you know, back when that happened, how do we know if we have success with that plan? So I'd hate that to be obscured, you know, by the situation we're in. I get the overall, you know...
Balancing.
Yeah, balancing act we got to do, but I can't, I don't have transparency to that view. So I don't know how that happened or how that would work, but that's my problem I'm having as a policymaker.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Loman, we can have our facility staff just do a quick check on what we've done since that assessment was presented to council, and, you know, what more is left to do based on the recommendations that were there. So we'll provide that for you before we get through the budget process.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I was going to ask almost exactly the same question, but Mr. Fabregas' answer has me asking something different, which is that facility's feasibility study, the service level study that we did, a part of that was in support of the BCA. So the question, I guess I would like to know specifically, is of the people that are being requested in this budget, how much of that service level that in facilities in general is being covered by this ask versus a facilities ask, if that's possible? So that, you know, if it's in part, like, I know there's facilities like Clean the BCA, that's a different thing than help a person install an exhibit in the art gallery, right? Those two different things. So I just want to make sure that we understand clearly if we're talking about needing a whole person or two people in order to fulfill the facilities, you know, service level requirement, they are different than the people you're asking for here for the BCA, and here's why, just so we have a clear understanding of that, if that makes sense.
We can get that information, Council.
All right, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. I got a few, but I'll stick with the arts. I'll be honest, I struggle with the additional position, no offense. I'm doing a great job, and I understand it's a lot, but part of the reason for that is we're already investing so much... But part of the reason for that is we're already investing so much in the center of the arts. And what I heard is we're going to do a study to take a look at how to operate that. And it seems a little premature to make changes prior to that study. I don't fully understand the responsibilities that our staff has versus our art partners. Shouldn't they be taking care of things after hours, making sure things are okay? And could we have someone else, not arts related, but facilities related, taking care of, as Councilmember DeLisandro said, with the cleaning and things like that for their events? So that one I'm struggling with, just given all of the stuff that we have done in that area. I also would like to see it with some type of plan for, you know, we've, we've talked a number of times about other revenue generating things like a cafe or something of that nature, utilizing some of the space in there. Could we put some type of positive revenue generating thing in place to fund that additional service level? In my mind, may make more sense. So it's not really a question, it's just my thought. The salary for the evenings and weekends at Herbeck, I think we talked about this before, and it's probably just my memory that I don't remember the details of it. And it's not extraordinarily large amount, but it doesn't seem like it generates enough additional revenue to cover the additional cost. And if it's not, then is it of that much value to the community? I mean, is right now the time we want to be expanding services when we're looking at eleven percent levy and looking at multiple years of high level levies? Is that, is this the time to be doing those things? I don't, I mean, it's probably great, but there's a lot of great things in our budget that frankly, I don't think are all that higher priorities for us to be doing. The golf course, the three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the design, I mean, it probably makes sense. I've been in that place. It's, it's not great. It's not great. My only question is, will we be able to recoup it through food and beverage increases and, and things like that by making it a better facility? If not, would we look at just instead of doing all new and doing really expensive, remodel it and take care of those deficiencies that are there for significantly less money? I mean, you could put that three hundred and thirty thousand dollars towards remodeling versus, you know, just doing that into design and building a new building. Lastly, aquatics, it's not a lot of money again, but there's some capital improvements in there, some of which may be necessary. But any of that that could be deferred, I think would make sense until we have a better concept or better idea of what we're doing at the Health and Wellness Center. Because I've heard from many people, and I believe I've heard here as well, about concerns about having two aquatics facilities and the sustainability and feasibility of that and how we continue to move that forward. And so until we have those questions answered, I'm not entirely sure it makes a lot of sense to invest discretionary money. If something's broken, take care of it, fix it. But if it's discretionary, I, I would at this point hold off. So no questions, just comments, I guess.
Thank you for your observations.
Anything else, council, regarding parks?
I'll echo what Councilmember Nelson said in regards to this. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Catry. Appreciate it. And we'll let you know if we have any additional questions.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Next up, our 2025 discussion on our police budget. Chief Hodges, thanks for sticking it out with us.
It's past my bedtime in here. Good evening, night, whatever you want to call it. So we're gonna, we'll, I'll be presenting the details of our 2025 budget. I know there's time constraints, but feel free to interrupt anytime I'm giving this presentation. All right, so the agenda for this, just like the other budget presentations, is going to be 2025 versus 2024. You all can read, so I'm not going to belabor the fact with this. I went too far, sorry. All right, our 2024 budget focused around personnel. Obviously, last year we asked for a lot of people. But this year, we're going to ask for, the increases are mainly due to inflation. Last year, a lot of our bodies that we got were a result of the public safety funding that the state had given us. And I'll get to the breakdown in that later. But we were really not asking for bodies this year like we were last year. It's mainly just increases dealing with inflation and whatnot. This is our budget here. As you can see, we, we anticipate for 2025 revenues approximately four point six million, which reflects an increase of eight hundred and forty four thousand dollars from 2024. The net total expenditures for 2025 for the police department are expected to be thirty seven point nine million. The largest area of growth is our salaries and benefits, which is up by three million dollars. And then changes in internal charges, which for us is an increase of about a million dollars. A detailed breakdown here, the things in blue are the things that we have control over in terms of our spending, the increases that we're asking for here. Obviously, we can cut our supplies, we could not rent some vehicles and whatnot, and we can cut our professional services. But the things and the numbers in black, we have no control over. So those are the union contracts that were approved last year, in addition to the benefits. And then again, the increases in internal service charges. And for those people who may wonder what the internal service charges are, it's fleet and IT are the main drivers for that, including some of our facilities renting here within the city. So the public safety aid, again, the state had given the city public safety aid dollars around four million dollars. And the city of Bloomington, you all voted to, we gave legal three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. And fire got seven hundred and sixteen thousand dollars last year. And this is the detailed breakdown of what we've spent or currently spending the state aid dollars. This has really helped us a lot, obviously for the taxpayers, but it's also allowed us to do some really innovative things here at the police department, like our therapy program and whatnot. But this, this really helped us. Our current staffing needs, sorry, I'm blowing through this, but like I said, feel free to stop me. I put up this slide every year just so people kind of get a breakdown of where we're at in terms of our size here in the city of Bloomington with the other departments. Our authorized strength is one hundred and twenty nine police officers. We're currently overstaffed by four due to the public safety funding that we were given. But if you look, we got ninety two thousand people in this city, one hundred and twenty nine cops. Rochester, one hundred and twenty four thousand people, one hundred and fifty eight cops. Duluth, eighty eight thousand people, one hundred and fifty eight cops. And St. Cloud, seventy two thousand people, one hundred and sixteen cops. This is a breakdown of the total staffing in the police department. And as you see in the red, the police officer piece here, those are the officers that we are currently overstaffed. And those officers are being paid for by the public safety dollars. In 2026, we will be asking for an additional sergeant, so I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. Because in terms of supervision, we do have some gaps that we need to address. And again, this is just another sheet that goes through our staffing. If you have any questions about that, we can discuss that also. Staffing needs, to address our staffing needs, we're going to continue to use the public safety dollars to be overstaffed. And I can't emphasize enough how important it was for you all to improve that. Most departments are not able to meet current staffing. And some departments who are, they're still not able to find people, quality people to do the job. So for us to be overstaffed has really helped. I mean, we've had some staff attritions with some retirements already this year, and to have these people up and ready to go. The police department has not missed a beat because of that. So again, I wanted to thank you for that. And we're also going to be asking in the future for supervisor in our telecommunications center, because right now the span of control in there is just way too, it's way too large for one person to deal with in the telecommunications center. Work chart, this is where we're at now. And again, you can all read, but I'm not going to belabor you with that. In 2025, 2026, there is one position on here that we're gonna, that we're going to ask to fund, again, with some public safety dollars, would be a commander of special projects. There's a potential grant for that, but the special projects commander that we're looking for as a result of the George Floyd Act nationally, there's been a push to have law enforcement agencies get accredited. And that accreditation process is very labor intensive. So the state of Minnesota, the Chiefs Association got a grant to do that. The city of Roseville recent, recently got a DOJ grant to do that, which is going to pay for one position for two years. And our plan is for us to apply for that grant in June. But this accreditation process is something that is going to start coming to all Minnesota law enforcement agencies. So while we have the opportunity, it's, I'd like to get in on the front end when the state's starting accreditation process. All right, so enhancing service delivery, we started Babbel. We're going to get that out here pretty quick, but our officers, including me, don't ask me to speak a language right now, but we just started to use Babbel so we can better communicate with our communities. So right now we have fifteen of our officers that are starting to use the Babbel software. Lexi Poll, before, we didn't have electronic policies. Our policies were still kept on Microsoft Word. Lexi Poll has allowed us to update our policies and also have a policy manual that's, we can change and one that allows people to get trained. A wellness program, obviously, we got a really good wellness program here at the police department. Brain health, we talked about the therapy program that I discussed earlier. Community engagement, we, we continue to build on our community engagement. I mean, you all out here with folks in the community, and we're going to continue to be out there. And the accreditation process I mentioned earlier, I think that I missed a slight revenue. Oh, we applied for over eight hundred thousand dollars in grants to support various programs. We revised the city code also for the false alarms piece, which is going to help offset some of the costs for that. Service reduction impacts, so this is our mission, obviously, Bloomington Police Department, your police department. It's always be respectful while keeping our community safe. And the city's mission is to cultivate an enduring, remarkable community where people want to be. Sorry, it's clicker. If we were to have a reduction in our budget, obviously, we would have to, it would hinder our ability to continue some essential services and potentially diminishing the quality of the community support that we have. And I do believe this is the best police department in the country, and we want to keep that up. And obviously, it takes funding to do that. And we just want to make sure that we continue to not only be the best today, but to continue to be the best. But if we had to reduce that, that's going to lead to some service reductions that we would have to do unfortunately, just like any other department in the city. So with that, I will take any questions.
Councilmember Loman and Councilmember DeLisandro. Councilmember Loman.
Thank you. So obviously, you showed the slide here with Rochester, Duluth, and Bloomington with the authorized sworn officers. You know, I, I asked the city manager this earlier today, but I mean, there's a, obviously a reason why we included that there. I'm just curious if, if you think that, that we ought to be looking, you know, I know with the, with the fire department, we, you know, we're behind in terms of where we need to be at. And I know we've made some changes here to try to get, get ourselves, you know, on a track. Do you, do you think that, you know, from a long term standpoint, you know, maybe five years out, that we should look more, you know, like Rochester or St. Cloud? I mean, just try to figure out kind of what, what you're trying to do here with this slide?
So I think it's important for people to see how we stack up against other agencies. But in terms of long term staffing planning, and this is a longer discussion, I'm pretty sure you guys want to have it ten thirty. But there is, there's some things that we're doing to get more officers on the street. So for example, you all allowed us to hire civilian jailers. So for every civilian jailer that was hired, that's a police officer that gets to go back on the street. And the civilian jailers don't earn as much as a police officer. So there's some stuff there. There's some other positions that we're going to look at too, that maybe a civilian can do as opposed to a police officer to try to continue to lower the tax levy within the city of Bloomington. But ultimately, long term, we should try to get a little bit closer to some of the other cities. But we're going to do what, what we need to do fiscally responsible to try to offset that by civilianizing some positions and continuing to do things like the civilian jailers.
Thank you for saying that. I just, I, I just get concerned. I know that as the demographic shift and change, I know there will have a bit of a dip, you know, with my generation, the Gen X generation. And so I just get nervous as we try to, if we're trying to catch up with folks, I just want to make sure we're, we're thinking about that because it may cost us, you know, taxpayers even more money later down the line. So I, I do appreciate though that we're trying to find other ways to try to do it fiscally responsibly, so.
Mr. Fabregas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Loman, I think there's a little bit of two different conversations as part of the comments and questions from Councilmember Loman. The first is, how are we doing on our staffing? And how are we managing what we know to be a demographic change that's coming within our department, primarily that we have a number of senior officers that are going to be retiring? And so that's why the police chief made the request with the, the public safety dollars to allow us to overstaff so that we do not see a dip with the, the number of police officers that we have during that transition that we're overstaffed and anticipating when those retirements are coming. It also helps us prepare for some of the experiential loss. If we have people now, we have fewer newcomers at the time, so you, you don't always have less experienced officers coming in at the same time, right? So that's part of what we're trying to do with the overstaffing plan. The issue of our, our authorized number of officers compared to other departments is a little bit of a different conversation, right? And I think that that's a longer term conversation, as the chief said, just understanding exactly what is the basis for the staffing numbers and the ratios that we have? And what is the right number? And that's a longer term conversation. But I, you know, from my perspective, I feel good with what the chief and his command staff have laid out in terms of a plan to manage us through what we know is, whether you call it silver tsunami or just the impending retirements that are coming, that we're going to be able to maintain the service levels and maintain budgets and, and maintain experience levels.
Thanks, and I'll wait for that other conversation because it's, I don't think it's determined to this budget. I think it's a little more long term.
Councilmember DeLisandro. Councilmember DeLisandro was good. Others?
I must be late.
This is what happens.
Councilmember Rivas.
I just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to ride with one of your officers. He was awesome. And the technology that you guys use is amazing. It's, it's, I mean, it was just, I don't want to talk about it because it gives it away, you know? But I mean, it was just unbelievable to, you know, I did it in the past, but it's been close to ten years. And the staff has changed so much. And they're amazing, the, the cops out there are amazing. I just couldn't believe he was reading license plates in the fly. I mean, it's like, you know, I was trying to keep up with him and I was just doing that. I wasn't driving. And Ryan, he, I mean, he was just already punching the mean, you know, when I was just reading them. It was amazing. So thank you so much for the opportunity, and I plan on doing it again, so.
Thank you.
That's it.
And I'll just close on this, you know, again, thank you for allowing us to be overstaffed. The applicant pool for law enforcement, I mean, this last process we did, we had seventeen people put in for police officer. I know Minneapolis has said they've got a thousand applicants. I'm not saying they're not telling the truth, but I got a hard time believing that there's a thousand applicants because we just, we haven't had that many apply here in the last four years. And there hasn't been that many people that have graduated school in Minnesota in the last four years. But we all count numbers different, I guess. But, but it's just one of these things, again, thank you for allowing us to be overstaffed. And it really helps because we're dealing with paid parental leave too. That's something that hasn't been discussed in the staffing model, but for us, and I know I've talked to the city manager, that's about one point seven five FTE that paid parental leave is costing us right now. And that's going to go. Um, and that's gonna go up as our officers, more of them reach that age where they decide to wanna have families, so.
Alright.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, chief. Our last budget discussion of the night, item five point six. This is our budget discussion for our legal department. Ms. Manderscheid.
Alright, thank you. I'm gonna invite our two uh legal staffers here up a little bit closer. Um, we have with us tonight in person, our crime victim liaison and our deputy city attorney in charge of the criminal team. On the telephone is Amir, who I know you've had before you a couple times, uh, and Peter, um, from the compliance and civil divisions respectively. So with that, um, can, Elizabeth, can you advance my slides for me as we go? Awesome, thanks. Okay. So this is the same as everybody else's and the interest of time. We'll move forward. Next slide. This is the slide that Kari puts together for everyone. Um, the uh legal department is requesting uh net expenditures totaling just over three million. Um, the key drivers are salary and benefits and material supplies and services. Uh, and um, we get into more details on that on the next slide. So this is the breakdown. You'll see salary and benefits um totaling just under three sixty-eight. Um, this is largely in part, or largely due and to the additional prosecutor, uh, and additional support specialist that uh the second position we funded with uh public safety funds. Um, but the prosecutor was needed due to the case numbers that you'll see on subsequent slides and the need to be in court um nearly every day of the week. Um, you'll also see information here on restorative court. Um, our numbers uh grew um such that the county, um, we have a shared agreement with the county for restorative court services. Uh, and the county indicated that they needed a, an additional staff person. Uh, and so we talked with Jamie and you all and were able to fund an additional staff person. So we have two social workers um that are Hennepin County attorney, uh, Hennepin County employees that we have a cost-sharing agreement with them in order to staff those services at the county. Um, we have outside legal expenses. This is gap coverage and also coverage um for weekends and holidays, which we've talked to you about previously. Um, the county is switching to a different software system, which will require us to um participate in a different way. And we've come up with a creative solution to work with the city of Minneapolis on that. Um, the materials and software uh supplies that is largely us leveraging technology um to overcome um the staffing, um, the personnel costs and the insert uh internal charges. You've heard about that from others, so I won't get into that. The items that are in red are um the beginning of an effort by the finance department to charge back some of the costs of the legal department. Um, the value, so to speak, of a legal department to the other uh parts of the city. Next slide. This is the attorney's office. There are about uh twenty of us in the, in the department. And uh again, broken into um criminal, civil and compliance. Uh, you have a, also a risk and litigation manager that we share with the finance department with the sixty forty split. The next slide is the theme um of this. Um, and so what I'm gonna tell you and the next uh, the second part of this presentation is, there's a lot going on. All of the presentations that you've heard, um, excuse me, from all the other departments, they're all asking for more staff. They're all talking about new programs and all of that is coming through legal for the most part. So I will show you on the subsequent slides that we, where we are at right now is um basically where we were a year and two years ago. We are tracking and we provided this material to you previously about forty different metrics of our work in those three different divisions. And they're all trending up. I tell Jamie um whenever we meet that they all look like airplanes taking off. Uh, so um from my perspective, we're just gonna highlight a few samples tonight. Don't worry, we're not gonna give, go through forty charts. But um, from my perspective, we can't, we have very little control over the inputs. Um, we can't control how, how often the, the officers pull people over. Um, we can't control how many declinations the county has. Um, there are things that we can't control. We can't control how many contracts get created um or how many administrative hearings there are. Um, but we can attempt to manage the workflow by meeting proactively with the departments, which we do. Um, and then we can also um manage our legal involvement and we'll talk about that on subsequent slides. So on this slide, you'll see DocuSign, which is the um system that we use to electronically execute documents. We rolled that out during COVID and we haven't looked back. Um, you'll see the, on that green chart down below, there are the environmental savings that we have experienced as an organization as a result of using DocuSign, which is kind of exciting. Um, five hundred, eight hundred and fifty-eight pounds of wood saved. Uh, and then City Biz is our online um internal tracking system that we use to move documents through the review system internally. So there's an originator and an department. Um, those round circles are where we are right now um in the year twenty twenty-four. Alright, next slide. Uh, the administrative division, this is, uh, excuse me, the compliance division. You know a lot about the things that they do with Earn Sick and Save Time and prevailing wage most recently. But what you may not also know is that they hear appeals of administrative, they take administrative conferences with residents. And so when people are um appealing or frustrated or need a workout plan um for a code compliance matter, uh, it works its way up to the compliance division and they meet with Amir and Larpoo. You'll be interested, you may be interested to know that the most common, three most common um things that they talk about with residents are chipped paint. These are violations. Chipped paint, abandoned vehicles and trailers. Next slide. And again, these circles are where we're at. This is the criminal division and, and what we're gonna spend the rest of the time talking about. So our prosecutors prosecute all the gross misdemeanors, misdemeanors and petty misdemeanor misdemeanors that occur in the city of Bloomington, which means all of the jurisdictions that are operating. So you have Metro Transit, State Patrol and our city of Bloomington officers. And we prosecute those cases both in person in downtown Minneapolis and remotely every day of the week. You'll see here the criminal cases opened, um, again where those um circles are. And you can see by the charts here how, where it's going. The most concerning um for me, I mean, I'm concerned about all of it, but the most concerning for me, because I know that domestic assaults only get worse, um, is the chart in the upper right, which is about the domestic assaults. And we're gonna talk more about that here in the next slide. So this is the criminal justice system. Um, and I thought, I think it's instructive because hopefully many of you don't have a lot of experience with it. But we're down here in that lower navy blue part. Um, and as you can probably tell, this is not a very intuitive process and victims need guidance working through this, not only to understand where to be and when to be there, but what's happening. And so this crime victim liaison that we have on staff, which is a grant-funded position since twenty eighteen, helps victims um develop some realistic expectations and understand uh where they should participate so that they can basically protect their energy and well-being uh and not be re-traumatized more than necessary. Next slide. Our crime victim liaison is here tonight. Um, Megan has been with us for a, a while, two years? Since December, okay, a year almost. Um, she's just integrated herself right in. Um, we, right now, we have one, I mean, frankly, I mean, I didn't really wanna get into too much, especially in light of the time, but we've had a lot of turnover in this position. Uh, it's a ton of work and it's really, really hard work, um, which you can probably expect. So kudos to Megan every day for doing it. Um, she talks to people that are having the worst day of their life every day for a living. So currently we're at one FTE. Um, again, it's partially funded through the grant um that we have, federal and state funding. This is an, an OJP grant, which a lot of organizations get. We try to get more money, but they really only wanna fund new programming and we wanna just keep doing more of the good work that we're already doing. Um, and so there's not, that's not a very um uh popular thing to fund. Um, so I mentioned a lot of these other things before in our presentation, but these are statutory requirements. And as I sent to Jamie earlier today, um, we have to do these things. We had a prosecutor in the state of Minnesota just get uh penalized by the Supreme Court for failing to meet their statute, statutory requirement to inform victims. So this is real stuff and the court's taking it seriously. Um, what's happening is because we are in court um every day essentially, um, Megan, um, our crime victim liaison is in court as well. And so the only day she really can, can uh regularly be in the office is on Fridays when we appear remotely. And that's not enough time for her to get everything done um that she needs to do. Uh, so, and we're requesting another person. Um, this is a, the information is there. Um, and we need it because we're not only seeing an exponential increase, but um it's being, the need is driven by two other elements. Uh, there's a dramatic increase in the number of scheduled hearings. In the past, um, our, our justice partners handled cases differently and than they do now. And there are just a lot of hearings, which requires a lot more victim contacts. And then also, as I mentioned, we're seeing a huge increase in DV cases, domestic violence cases. Those are time-intensive and unfortunately increasing. We partner with a community organization. Um, we, we pay them for the services uh historically over the, over the years. Um, and I thought it would be helpful for you to know that when talking to them about how much it would cost and, but what they would need to fund their part of it um as a confidential victim uh service provider, our, our crime victim liaison by comparison is not confidential. Um, they estimated they would need one and a half to two FTEs, so. And they're only doing the DV cases. Next slide.
Before you go on, Melissa, just real quickly go back to that slide. Uh, the, I, I just wanna reemphasize under the why need now, that first bullet. Um, that, that's one of those uh issues that's really out of our control because that's driven by behavior of others who are operating within the ju- criminal justice system. And so we, we can't necessarily ask them to limit the number of hearings as a way for us to control our response to this.
Thank you. That's true. Uh, of course, it's true. Yeah. Next slide. Alright. Thanks, boss. Alright, so I also wanted to include this, this picture here because if you haven't been to court and, and by the way, you're always in, you're always able to shadow our prosecutors anytime you'd like. Um, just reach out to me or Jennifer and we can get that set up for you. But if you're a victim, you've just gone through one of the worst patches in your life. Um, and now you've gotta go to this big scary courtroom and try and um, uh, do your best, right? So it, less than ideal circumstances for any of us, um, let alone somebody in that situation. So um, what the crime victim liaison does is she, he or she moves between the attorneys and is a central point of contact for the victim and works with the prosecutors to provide co- a comprehensive understanding of what is going on. Um, they also work with the victims to provide victim input, um, to understand what's going on and to create a cer- situation where the victims can offer some nuanced insight into the defendant's behaviors so that they can inform the type of uh recommendations that the prosecutors are making. It also creates rapport in our office and gives the prosecutors an opportunity to try to incorporate the victim's wishes into the resolution of the case. And also um hopefully prevents our prosecutors from becoming witnesses in their own cases. The other thing, from a very functional perspective, they're sending letters, they're reaching out, they're calling the victims. They're also working with the victims to submit affidavits for restitution to try to make the victims financially whole by asking the court to help cover the financial impact of the criminal act that they experienced. So as I mentioned, a lot going on. Next slide. And by the, I, I know I mentioned it, but the crime victim liaison is here if you wanna ask questions. So what are we doing to try and get some more money um for the legal department? Our options are pretty limited. Um, as I mentioned, we've already talked about grants and the cost shaving, cost sharing that we have with Hennepin County. We get a small percentage of forfeiture sales, but the law on forfeitures has dramatically changed over the years and they are significantly down and highly unreliable um as far as a source to fund things that are ongoing. The other thing to know is that most of our revenue, and I know I've provided this information to you previously, goes directly into the city's general funds. When there's fines or penalties and fees, they don't come into our department, they go into the general fund. Alright, last two slides. So what are we doing to enhance our delivery? As I mentioned, we're spending a lot of money and energy on efficiencies that we can achieve through technology. We're rolling out a new document management system. We also are working on a policy modernization program throughout the city to update and improve our policies and create some greater clarity among our employees. Uh, we are also similarly working on procurement clarity so that we can um modernize our procurement, uh, eliminate some of the procedural hoops and steps that are required, not only for staff, but also for our vendors. Um, we are working um hopefully with the legislature on, as a part of our legislative uh request, hopefully, um, to create some more resources at the state level to change our data retention and improve that and quicken it up so that we can get rid of more old documents that we don't need to keep anymore and then have no value added. The reason that's particularly relevant is because when we get data requests, we have to produce all this extra data that we are keeping and holding on to because the data retention policies are so out of date. Um, we're working on some efficiencies with our change order process, which we know we're gonna need for the upcoming huge projects that we have going on. We are one of the departments that does not have enough spots for people to sit down. Um, we are sharing offices on an ongoing basis to the point, um, and I don't mean to complain, but this is real. We have to, we have had to ask some employees who want to work in the office to um work from home instead so that other people can work in the office, 'cause we don't have enough places for people to work. So we carried over some money um to do an office remodel and I was told that, I got an update last week, that it's continuing to move forward and hopefully we will be able to accommodate that. Again, I mentioned some of these other things already. We have a working group that um Jennifer and others, um, David and Jackson and others on our department are interested in working throughout the organization. We just had a training about the um uh, pro- the process for staff and domestic violence. And there are some other things that are coming up as well. This is really interesting and exciting to me, this next bullet point um about subpoena service efficiency. So what the crime victim liaison does is reach out to the victims in advance so that um hopefully we can make the uh, the times that they're getting uh service and um other points of contact from the, from the judicial partners efficient and we can find them. Can you imagine like trying to do this and then having the process server show up at your house and, you know, all of these other things that don't make the situation better? So our crime victim liaison is able to reach out earlier in the process. Um, we're working with technology, the equity project we've already mentioned, the restorative court, and then all these other things that we're helping the other departments reach their goals. So um as every department was asked to come up with some uh things that are also under discussion for stopping doing. Um, and so we've talked with Jamie about all of these and, and the finance director as well and our internal staff. Um, we have already started removing ourself, our legal department from some of the workflows um as a way of um removing our involvement in some of the lowest risk uh review. Um, we are intent, uh, planning to roll out some reduced insurance requirements uh as again, as a man, way of mitigating risk or managing the risk um to the extent possible and decreasing the work. Um, there's always the option of amending our case resolution guidelines for our prosecutors. What, what that means is that our uh officers would, would pull people over and cite them and we would not prosecute them as, just as a decision in advance. Uh, legal counsel, we provide counsel to the court and to the HRA. And so stepping back from that is also under discussion, what that might look like. Uh, decreasing involvement in non-legal functions such as the, the fun stuff, um, and the other um professional associations. And then the last thing is, uh, and we have started doing this already, is using outside counsel. We would propose using them more frequently. So with that, I'd stand for questions. And again, as a reminder, we have the division um, uh, mani- division leads here in person and on the phone as well as the crime victim liaison.
Thank you. Before we get into questions, I'm going to make a motion that we extend until no later than eleven fifteen this evening. I'm gonna motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we've got until eleven fifteen. Let's get this done. Any questions from Ms. Manderscheid? Councilmember move up.
Um, not a question, just a comment. Um, I don't think we say this enough to all of you, but thank you for all of the work you do. Um, seeing the graphs and seeing our, the work that you have to do every day, continue to increase year after year, knowing that we live in a dynamic community. Um, our police officers and our firefighters are frontline and they're big bright lights that people see, but we don't see the work in the back. So I just wanna say thank you to you, Ms. Manderscheid. I thank you to the attorneys and the staff that are watching it online right now. Um, the work you do is essential to make sure that we continue to stay a safe community, so that's all I wanted to say.
Thanks for your comments, councilmember. Councilmember Lowman.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So uh, we'll stay this year much more effective. Um, I was scared last time you presented. Now I'm freaked out. So, I, I mean, if I just look at these slides for the uh criminal division uh that you have here.
Elizabeth, can you roll back a couple to the criminal division slides, the charts?
There's a couple of these ones where you don't even have twenty twenty-five.
One more.
On here.
Right, yeah.
And so is it, is it so bad that, I mean, I'm gonna fall off my And so is it, is it so bad that I'm going to fall off my seat when I look at it next year?
No, I mean, we just, we weren't super confident in the estimates based on what's going on in, in the office and in the world. And so we decided that we would only stick with stuff that we felt pretty confident about the numbers on, so.
So, I mean, obviously, I mean, I see these numbers that are here, but these don't also represent, you know, complexity of, of workflow, right? I mean, if I look at, you know, these, these elements here, there would be different types of, you know, complexity and amount of time that would take to do these things, right? Is that a fair assessment?
Mayor members, absolutely. There are cases that are payables, that are less complicated. And then there are domestic violence and DWI sort of on the other end of it. Those are the most complicated.
So that, that would be also, I mean, there's only some ways you can, you could dice it. I guess, I guess my, my question is, I know that, that the last time through, you know, a number of years back, we had that change where we got shifted down to downtown. Were we still seeing impacts from that in terms of the workflow? Or have we mitigated some of those things so that we're not seeing as much of an impact of doing that? I mean, are we housed, are we kind of housed downtown in terms of?
So mayor members, I would say that it is, it's the new normal. It's been our normal for, for many years now. And we've adjusted to it. We have seen a change, but we're just in a different pool of judges and a different pool of public defenders. But it's just the new reality. We're not going back to South Town. It doesn't exist anymore. And so we are leaning in and taking advantage of the resources and opportunities that might be there in downtown.
Yeah. I mean, it's sort of, it doesn't seem adequate. I mean, and I know that, again, we're trying to balance here, but I'm just, it's very scary looking, these numbers, so.
Mr. Verbrugge, something to add?
Yes. You know, I, we've, we've talked about a lot of the reasons that we're seeing the surge in work that's occurring in legal and especially in criminal. And, you know, we have a couple of things that we continue to keep our eye on. One is, you know, we, we tout that crime is going down, which it is. And yet, we're seeing an increase in the number of cases that are coming through. Some of that has to do with the fact that it's not just BPD that is reporting activity within Bloomington. We have other partners, whether it's Minnesota State Patrol or Transit, you know. So we, we get caseload from, from other agencies as well. The other, the other thing that adds to the complexity that Melissa's talked about in the past is just the, the way that technology is affecting criminal justice system right now. It, it's a very good thing that we have body cams. And we've talked about this before, in terms of, you know, protecting officers, providing verifiable evidence of activities, right? And so, you know, there's, there's a number of reasons why we think that body cameras are a good thing. And they create a lot of data and it's a lot of data to manage. It's a lot of data for our staff to have to work through, to go through discovery, and it's expensive, right? And so a driver that's here that isn't necessarily isolated is that the legal team's participation in our technology that mostly is in the police budget is a, is a real driver as well. So for example, the Axon contract that deals with body cameras and whatnot, we're looking at how we can provide some measure of long-term stability in our funding forecast there and manage what we know to be a continuing evolution and how that technology is used for the purposes of criminal prosecution and support for the police department. So we have even more drivers than I think what we've discussed here that are, are really challenging this, the office itself and the staff, but also challenging us from a budget perspective.
Yeah, I didn't include this slide, mayor members. I want to say, Jen, five-fold increase in the, in the quantum of data bits coming in through our online, not online, our body cam evidence.
Councilmember Alessandro.
Very quickly, on the civil side, you mentioned that the compliance team deals a lot with unresolved complaints. They look a lot like compliance-related issues to our environmental ordinances, chipped paint, abandoned vehicles and trailers. If there's, if there's anything that you want to bring to counsel that would reduce that number, I think you have, at least from my perspective, you have an ear. As an example, you know, do I think that 24 hours on the, on the side, like on a public road is too many hours? No. What if it was 48? Would you get half the cases that you do? I have no idea. Like, I just would like for us to be thinking a little bit innovatively about some of that, especially as it relates to some of those things. So if we thought we could pull that off of your docket, because they are somewhat arbitrary, right? I mean, I had this argument with y'all when we were talking about RVs. What's the difference between a 40-foot RV and a 43-foot RV? Like, I don't understand. Like, those kinds of things, right? I know you think there is, but I don't think there is.
No, I just said three feet.
Three feet, right, exactly. But the point I'm making is, you know, maybe, maybe there's some wiggle room in these things that we can support that will actually ease that burden for you. And I'd love for you all to consider bringing them to us because I think, at least I want to speak for myself and say that you would have a, you would have somebody open to the idea. Thanks.
Yeah. So mayor members, it's chipped paint, oversized trailers and abandoned vehicles, which typically means they don't have up-to-date tabs or license, they're missing license plates or all their tires are flat or things like that. Those are the three most repeaters. With regard to previews, Chief Hodges gave you a preview of what we're going to be coming with next year. And Jamie knows that I, that I think the numbers support another prosecutor and another civil attorney. But frankly, at this point, we don't have any place to put them. So I haven't pushed very hard, but we, the numbers support them as you can see. I mean, this is a huge increase. So we're trying to work around, but, and continue to look for, I mean, we have continued to look for other funding sources to support that as well. But it, those are some realities.
Mr. Verbrugge.
Nothing more.
No.
So again, we have the crime victim liaison here and the other folks, if you have any other questions.
Any additional questions?
Well, I mean, Mr. Verbrugge. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Since there are no more questions, just let me remind the seven of you and anybody who's watching at home how this whole mishmash works is that, you know, we have one more sort of budget presentation day for you, which is November 18th. We'll be bringing in some, some of, some of the other funds that we haven't covered yet. And then November 25th, I'll come in with the city manager's recommendations on how we tie all of this together. You know, the comments and the questions that we've heard tonight will provide information for the council that's responsive to those questions and then try to make sure then when we provide that recommendation on November 25th for how we get to a final budget resolution, that hopefully we're, we're taking into consideration the thoughtfulness of your questions and, and trying to figure out where the council's going to land on a number of these things and, and still maintain our priorities. So that's how the process will unfold.
There you go. Any comments or questions on that, council? All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Manderscheid. Thank you for sticking with us this late and appreciate your, your being here. Our last item of the evening is item 5.7, our city council policy and issue update. I'll kick it off based on our listening session that we had earlier this evening. We heard from one, two, three, four, four or five folks, five folks, I guess. Mark Janko had some good comments about bicycle safety and ways to make things a bit more safe for our two-wheel friends on the streets of Bloomington. Sally Ness talked again why her name was on past police reports, a question that has been answered a number of times and continues to be brought back to us. And the question and the answer doesn't change, but we continue to hear from Ms. Ness with that question. Brian Wolfe from the Nine Mile Creek, the Restore the Nine group came and thanked us actually for the work and the involvement and the engagement that went on in the work that, as, as the, the project planning process went on for the, the restoration of the Nine Mile Creek corridor came through and had some good things to say. Gary Turnus, who is a, I think a board member, the board chair of the Real Life Cooperative, had questions about police propping open doors. And we, we said we would be talking to Chief Hodges about that and trying to get, come to some resolution about how that might work out, both for the work that the police need to do, but also for the security and the safety of the folks at the Real Life Cooperative. And Jerry Hilleran had some questions and concerns regarding the Bloomington Health and Wellness Center, particularly duplicative services and, and things that would be going on throughout the rest of the community that might be part of the Health and Wellness Center, as well as concerns about the loss of a, of a specific and unique community senior center for, for seniors here in the city of Bloomington. So a good, a good council listening session once again. I have nothing else. Mr. Verbrugge, do you have anything to add this evening? Nothing from Mr. Verbrugge. Council, do you have anything to bring forward tonight? Councilmember Alessandro.
One thing, very quickly, reminder that applications for the Learning to Lead program are due this Thursday. I think October 31st is the cutoff, so hopefully people will want to join that cohort. And we know it's a great program. I'm going to send some questions to, to staff about that program. I'd like to understand how much it costs us to run it and if we could do it more than once a year because I've had an uptick in people interested. But maybe the timing doesn't work and stuff. So I think it's a program worth expanding myself. But anyway, if, if people are interested, I think it's very simple. It's blm.mn.learningtolead, I think, is how you get to the website. But October 31st is the last date to join. Thanks.
Anything else, council? We are at the end of our agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Mu, a second by councilmember Carter to adjourn this evening. No further council discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Motion carries 7-0. We are adjourned. Thanks much, council. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in tonight. Thanks to the staff. Everybody have a happy Halloween.